Okay, the February 1st, 2017 meeting of the Cooperative School Board will come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. There are several changes, so bear with me, that I'd like to propose. There is a field trip request, and Sean Kelly is here to speak to that, and since he's here just for that, I was wondering if we could put that right after the approval of the minutes. Is that agreeable? Then there's additional business that we have to deal with. There's a letter that Todd Selig has composed about the changes in the requesting the state to contribute more to retirement, and there's a possible action item where we may want to, you know, also support that letter, write our own letter. And then, so that will go at the end of, at the end of the board actions, next to the end of board actions, because there's one more on board action, that I think we need a motion to tentatively schedule a meeting after the deliberative session, because if there is a change in the warrant, a substantial change in the warrant, that's our only opportunity to recommend or not recommend it. So we may not, we may not need it, but can you understand why we might have to have it?
Yeah.
So, so that would be the under-board actions. And one final change, if we could, since a group of the PE teachers are here to speak on the graduation retirement, graduation policy, if we could move that to the top of the board actions, rather than have them sit through the whole thing. Is that agreeable? Okay.
Did you want to put the field trip, the overnight field trip?
Yeah, I mentioned that, yeah. So with those changes, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Al. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, and if you could just keep me, because that's a number of changes, so if I've skipped something, just whack me in the head, okay? Okay, public comment?
It's a race.
Okay.
Pardon me.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Michael Williams. I'm a Madbury resident and a candidate for school board this year. I wanted to address you regarding the petition warrant article. I think that it is, based on some of the conversation in the community, I think it is likely that there will be a lot of interest in amendments to the warrant article at the deliberative session next week, and I wanted to make sure that the board and administration and the moderator are aware of a recent New Hampshire Supreme Court case called Katie versus Dearfield, where the state Supreme Court defined more specifically than they have in the past, the scope of amendments that are allowed at deliberative session.
Thank you.
Robert Barrett Lee, this is ree football, so I'll go into my two-minute drill, hopefully. As a physician, a former ORA coach and taxpayer, I find ORYA youth football irresponsible and ill-advised, and I would object to my tax dollars paying for high school football. Medical experts tell us the brains of children grow at incredible rates, and repeated jarring blows to the head can stunt that growth. While concussions are a concern, the larger danger to long-term cognitive health is a repeated sub-concussive blows, like the ones linemen absorb on nearly every play. Several studies have shown that college and pro players who began playing tackle football at a young age have the greatest risk of developing memory and thinking problems later in life. This is no longer conjecture, it's scientific fact. The earlier they started playing, the worse their brains fared later on, says Dr. Robert Stern, Director of the Clinical Research at Chronic Traumatic Encephalopathy Center at BU School of Medicine. High school football is a lousy idea on many levels: expense, potential litigation, brain trauma, Title IX compliance, and field space. Fortunately, we don't now have these problems. Hopefully, the community will reject taking them on. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Could I have a motion to approve the January 11th, 1917, public budget minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve January 11th public budget hearing minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Al, are there changes to those minutes? Hearing none? If we have a vote, all those in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor. Could I have a motion to approve the January 18th, 1917, regular minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve January 18th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Al, are there corrections?
I have one on page two, where it's under, where it's announcements, combinations, comments, B, where it said Al Holland shared a letter, I think I should just say Al Holland informed the board of a letter from Matt Pappas, who is on the school board in Rochester, because I didn't actually give you guys the letter.
Okay. So did you have that, Laura? Kenny?
On page six, and it's where we're talking about sending a letter to the Senate Committee that was considering the appointment of Betsy DeVos to be the new Secretary of Education. I think the wording doesn't capture.
Page six?
Page six, I think it's page six.
Yeah, halfway down.
Halfway down, yeah. So I would like to try to clean that up a little.
I'm sorry, what section is it?
It says, so it begins, "Letter to Secretary of Education," but it, the letter really isn't to the Secretary of Education. We were talking about the nominee to become the Secretary of Education. If I have your permission, I don't have anything in writing now, but I think both that and also the motion doesn't really reflect what we actually said and what we did.
Can you read the motion out loud, Ken?
Yeah, so the motion was Kenny Rotner moved to direct the superintendent to send a letter to our senators, as well as the chair of the committee board, so it would be the chair of the committee considering the nomination. And that, so the committee board isn't, the part that is advocating that committee, I would take out of that, and put that the committee does not approve that nomination. I think that's what our motion was.
So can you tell us again what you're deleting, Ken? I just kind of back Laura up, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it was confusing, it was on the fly. So Kenny Rotner moved to direct the superintendent to send a letter to our two New Hampshire senators, as well as to the chair of the committee that was considering the nomination of Betsy DeVos to be Secretary of Education. We would like the letter to state that we do not support this nomination, and urged a vote against approval.
Do not support it.
Okay. I'm lost.
Ken, I can, I can structure it tomorrow. I got the basics of it, and I'll restructure it tomorrow.
And the wording above too, I think, the consider, and I could submit something.
So can we approve it with the understanding that they're going to clean it up? Okay. Maria?
On page five, on page five, it says Maria Burroughs feels that there is already organizations fundraising in the districts, and she knows that there are consulting firms that can predict pretty accurately how much can be raised in the district.
Total amount.
The total amount that could be raised in the district.
Do you have that one, Laura? Okay.
You.
Okay, with those changes, can we approve the, these minutes? Denise? Do we have a motion?
Do we, yeah, I already motioned.
I think we have, I think we have a motion.
Yeah, so it's just.
Yeah, so all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Could I motion, have a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of January 18th? Denise?
I motion to approve the January 18th non-public meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, second by Al. Changes to those? Hearing none, no. Sorry, Maria?
No. Ready to vote.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Those minutes are approved. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
Good evening. I just wanted to let you all know that this, tomorrow evening at 6:30, we will be having the eighth grade parent night at the high school, so we encourage everybody to attend. We also will be starting our course registration for next year, this coming Friday, so Friday will be the opening of the beginning of course registration for the 2017-18 school year. And lastly, we have our NEAS visit coming up, and that is in March, it's the 19th, which is a Sunday, begins in the afternoon, and it will run all the way through the 22nd. And I have invitations for each of you that I will share with you at the end of the evening.
Thank you. I made a mistake, because I, we're going to have the field trip after, right after the minutes, so if that's okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I've already, I've already screwed this thing up, so it's a very tough night.
Well, I'm actually going to step aside. We have Andrea Staples, she's the editor-in-chief of Mouth of the River this year, and she was actually on staff last year, so she was able to make this same trip last year, so she'll just briefly talk about why it was a great experience for her.
Okay.
Hi, so last year, we went to the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, and I think the best part of this meeting was conferencing with all the other student publications. There were over 500 other student publications, not only from the United States, but also from other countries. I met with one publication from Mexico, and I actually made a good friend from Missouri on a publication who I still talk to today. We were really able to go into any of our particular interests, because on the staff we all have different strengths and weaknesses, and each different program that you can choose to go to and attend, there's many going on at once, so you can choose to go to one focusing on pictures, or one focusing on a certain form of writing, or anything around those grounds, and it's something that I would love to experience again, more so because it really brings the staff together as a family. The staff of Mouth of the River is not like any other class. We all work together for the final product, and it's definitely one of the most memorable experiences I'll have at Oyster River, and I'd love for the staff, especially the new staff members, to be able to experience the trip.
Great. Is there a form that we have for this, or is this? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So in terms of chaperones and all that?
So Sean and Andrea are proposing 12 students attend. The chaperones would be Sean and Alex Martin.
Okay, and this is to, to New York, right?
Yes.
Okay. And for how long will you be there?
Three days. We would leave early in the morning on March 15th and return late at night on March 17th.
Okay. Other questions?
Just, I want to commend you for just an outstanding publication. You all, you do a wonderful job.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Ready to vote?
I'd like to make a motion, can I grab that paper so I can just? I'd like to make a motion to approve the English field trip, which departs on March 15th and returns March 17th to Columbia University in New York City.
Moved by Al, is her second? Second by Denise?
Just a question, is that by bus, bus, car, train?
Right now, we're planning on taking a bus out of Boston, similarly to how we did last year, and then we'll stay at an Airbnb in New York City, and we'll take the subway to Columbia daily.
Denise did.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, have a great time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so if we go back to the district?
Sorry about that, I was supposed to.
You want to do the second one?
Was there another one?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Go ahead.
So Suzanne?
The second trip has to do with the orchestra and music program. Every year, there are students that go to Allstate, and this year, we have, we have nine students total, but this particular trip would be for seven of those students. So they would be traveling to Concord for, in March, in the 30th. They would be leaving on a Thursday and returning on a Saturday to compete in Allstate.
I just want to point out, five years ago, we had a total of two students going to Allstate, so five years later, we've quadrupled that number and then some, so it's quite, quite an honor to be invited to Allstate. Mark and Andrea are our music teachers at the high school, will be chaperoning.
So we need a motion?
Okay, need a motion? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Allstate music trip, which is, departs Thursday, March 30th, in Concord.
Okay, moved by Al, is her second? Second by Denise, are there further questions for Suzanne about the trip? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Those are approved. So no more field trips?
No more.
Okay.
No, Tom, can I follow up with Suzanne on a, on a question about the high school night for the incoming ninth grader?
Sure.
I've had some questions from community members. Are students supposed to be attending that with their parents, or is it a parents-only event?
The students, the counselors went to the middle school already and spoke with the students, so if the students can't attend for a variety of reasons, it's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other district announcements, accommodations, comments?
Kari Vesh from Mastway. Just two pieces, excuse me, from PTO. This Friday night, we are celebrating our annual girls' night out with the theme of Get Your Glow On. It's a whole neon theme, so girls, along with special guests, are welcome to enjoy a night of dancing, games, and fun that will be at Mastway. Next Thursday, we'll have our PTO meeting on Thursday, the 9th. 6:30 is an evening meeting for those parents that can't attend. We try to alternate evening and morning meetings, so if you're not able to attend during the day, please consider coming for the evening meeting. We'd love to see some new faces. And also, Susie and Tomaschevsky, our library media specialist, has been working throughout the year with our Chinese program, if you will, at the elementary school, merging it into the lessons in the library, and this week, they have been celebrating Chinese New Year, the Year of the Rooster, and they've been having a lot of interesting activities going on in the library. If you'd like to stop by and come see some of those, you're more than welcome, so thank you.
Board announcements, accommodations, and comments?
Did you want to go first, Mar?
To be a little different, but since we have two Durham town counselors here, I'm so excited about Durham trying to become a B city USA, which obviously is not only good for the Bs, but good for all of us, because it means more environmental protection. Thank you.
Denise?
I just want to commend the eighth grade Renaissance team, in particular, English teachers, Susie Renner and David Irvin, who did a phenomenal job at the concert, the guitar and writing concert. It was, it was just amazing, the way they combined everything, and the students just did an outstanding job, and it was great, real creative.
Kenny?
I just wanted to point out, as we walked in, and all of us walked into the meeting tonight, I don't know what your floors are like at home, maybe it's that I have two golden retrievers, but they're a mess, and it is spotless, and I just want to commend the custodial staff. What an incredible job to, with the traffic that they have maintaining this.
I just thought it'd be good to review who's doing which warrant article, just to make sure we're all on board with that, and I know that if, you know, in the past, I've always gone into Sue if I had questions about, you know, the details and background and questions, you know, so she's a wonderful source of information. So warrant article three is mine, which is the contract, the school contract, so who has four?
I believe I have four.
Okay, four. Denise, four. Five, discontinuing the track funds.
Maria has five.
That's me.
That's you.
You have five? Okay.
According to my notes.
Six?
I have six. That's me.
Six, okay. Seven is Al. And then maybe later, we can decide if we want, you know, if we're going to respond to that, who does that, because if we have a letter, whether we're going to actually respond to Article 8, but maybe let's put that off until we talk about that statement we're going to have, okay?
And then we have the outstanding.
Yeah. Who's got the?
That's Dan.
Okay, okay.
Citizen.
Would you decide what the eighth one?
What? Well, wait, we'll sign the eighth one, decide what we're going to do, once we, because we have, what kind of statement we're going to have, whether we're going to read it, just how we're going to respond to warrant article eight. Okay, are there other board comments, commendations? Yeah, Sarah?
I just want to say thank you to all the elementary staff. I know progress reports just came out, and having an elementary student, it's really, the comments in particular are incredibly appreciated, and I know there are a lot of things to check off, and lots of competencies to check, and they're definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anymore? Okay, Assistant Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Actually, one quick thing before I make one request. With the progress reports at the elementary school, I always want to thank Sue Johnson for all the work she does behind the scenes. She spent multiple days at both elementary schools, being there to provide tech support and coach people through, and deal with those late, late evening calls from teachers, you know, struggling with some technical glitch. So anyway, Sue always comes through for us, so thank you to Sue Johnson on that. I did want to follow up on something I asked you about last meeting, the, we now have one completed sabbatical application, and the deadline has passed, so we are assembling our sabbatical committee to review the application and determine it. I do need a representative from the school board, so I would request that you select someone tonight to be on that committee.
Kenny, did you, did you ask before about that?
I would be happy to do that.
Okay. If it's ever since agreement, if Kenny would be the, I don't think we need to vote on that, okay? Okay, Kenny?
Thank you. I will email you in the next two days, once we pick the date, it'll probably involve two meetings. Okay, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Attended the town of Lee this week, and did a preview of the budget for them, and gave them a sense of where the school district is and where it's going. I would say that the meeting was very, very positive, the selectmen were engaged in the conversation, and it was, you know, in four presentations to them, I felt the most comfortable. It was a good presentation. I want to piggyback Denise by saying I went to the high school concert, and it was magnificent, strings program, orchestra. It was just amazing. Then I followed it up with the eighth grade concert, which is a guitar concert with Susie Renner, and I laughed through the whole thing. It was just hilarious, it was wonderful, it was energetic, it was raw, and it was very much a middle school experience, so it was really cool. And I would recommend, if anybody has any music concert on their agenda in the future, to go see the eighth grade one for pure engagement and joy, which doesn't take anything away from the sophistication and talent of the high school program. There is a budget PowerPoint in your packet that goes back to what Tom was alluding to, now that you've refreshed your memories on who's doing what, if you just review your warrant. If you do have any questions, Sue or I are available to support you in any, any way. And we're going to talk about the letter on behalf of HB 413 a little bit later in the schedule, so that's it, Tom.
Okay. Business administrator?
I just gave you a recent update on the budget, this year's budget. Actually, looking a little better than it did the last time I gave you an update, so trending pretty much the same as we usually do. Still a little early in the year, but I think we're good. Questions? That's it. Thanks.
Good is good. Student center report?
At the high school, we have just concluded our midterms and finals for semester-long classes, so students' stress level's going a little down, but we're kind of tired. But as a senate, we're moving towards creating an, maybe Earth Day-style event sometime in the spring, maybe before vacation, for the whole student body to become engaged. We're reaching out to the Sustainability Club to help us put on that event, just, just a great school environment project that we're working towards, to create a day where everyone can take a break from the classroom, get outside in the spring, and we think that that would be great. And we are still looking into my replacement for when my term is over in March.
Does nobody put their name in yet?
We have a tentative.
If nobody does, you realize what happens, right?
No college, you come back here.
No college, I'm just staying. I'll commute back.
Yeah, great. Okay, so now we have the presentation on middle school competencies.
Did you want to do competencies first, or did you want to do the phys ed piece first?
I thought I'd do the competencies. There are two.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. No tie tonight, I told my teachers I got home tonight, of course, expected my 20-year-old son to shovel the driveway, did he? No, of course not, because I've been busy doing that. Just a quick update, kind of where we've been. We had a parent forum last week. I must say, you know, words can't properly express my appreciation for the group of teachers who come out to these, you know, events. I have Alida Carter, she's a PE teacher, Val Wolfson, a social studies teacher, Andrea Lawrence, a science teacher, Jason Duff is our special education rep. Who am I missing? Diana Pelletier, our ELA rep, Lynn Ellsworth is our math rep, Jason Demers, another rep is actually home on dad duty with his two daughters, so I'm not going to get into a long spiel, I'm going to turn it over to the most important people, my teachers, but many of you know how I feel in terms of why I would like to get the board's support, in terms of going in this direction, in terms of competencies and standards. Next Monday, our report cards are released, or our reporting is released to all parents, and, you know, I've always struggled with, you know, if a student gets an A-, or a B- minus, or a C., what information is that telling my students and my parents and my entire school community? So I'm going to turn it right over to our Aaron Ward. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Aaron.
All right, I'm Aaron Ward, teach sixth grade math at Oyster River. Am I controlling this? Perfect. Let's cut off a little bit, we're going to keep our presentation much briefer than last time, when we presented to the board. We appreciate you hearing it again. More this time, we're looking for, if you have questions, we'll try to answer those the best way that we can. If not, we'll take them back to our team so that we can get you some answers and continue work with our staff. So really quick review of the terms, they haven't changed this year, we're looking at competencies as kind of an umbrella, the big ideas that encompass standards, the standards are state-defined, nationally-defined for language arts and math, we're talking about Common Core. For science, we're talking Next Gen, and for social studies, we're talking about the C3 standards. So a lot of our work this year has been finishing defining those competencies, I feel like we're in a good spot. Staff has completed that. We've had a lot of discussions about the three verse four tiered system. We have some to share tonight, we'll have more to share on that at another point. And then this year, we did a lot with our habits of learning. For those that aren't familiar, that might be listening, the idea of the competency-based learning is, we have a learning is we have a set of academics that gives the academic picture of the student and then we have a set of kind of lifelong skills that gives the skills that are not maybe academic, but the engagement, et cetera. So as a staff, we had some feedback, we narrowed it from about 20 to 10 to four, and tentatively we have settled on growth mindset, responsibility, respect, and engagement. So instead of every team having different, and every subject having different habits of learning, we're looking to have those universal next year as defined by the team, so it's kind of up to the teams what responsibility looks like for them. So I'm excited, obviously, with your approval as we move forward to get into it with our staff as far as looking at common assessments, common rubrics, really the important things. I feel like we've got the nuts and bolts mostly down, but looking at, you know, more collaboration, working together, performance tasks, really bringing the whole idea of competencies to fruition. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Lawrence, who's going to talk a little bit more about the differences between traditional and competency-based learning. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Lawrence, seventh grade science teacher over at the middle school. So a lot of times we're focused, we're spending our time focusing on how we're reporting and what we're reporting. So certainly the three versus four is much different than the A, B, C, D, but there's also many differences that we want to highlight tonight. So to start, competency-based learning totally separates, and I think Aaron mentioned this, totally separates academics from behaviors. So instead of having one lumped grade of academics, effort, participation, extra credit might be lumped in there, the grade and the competency is strictly based on what the student can know and what can do in that competency, and we'd be reporting on habits of learning in a different area, and then we'd also have the narrative to explain more if we needed to elaborate. So that's one of the biggest differences. Second, in competency-based learning, we expect the students to achieve, and oftentimes in traditional, students are pushed through the system. Some students are pushed through the system who are not reaching the level we'd like and they keep going. But with a competency-based system, it's really built so there's areas where they can improve and the schedule will eventually work to have some kind of a system where they can revisit and the students will have time to do that and they'll learn and be trained to do that, to go visit teachers and to revisit. So it's rigorous, to meet a standard, there are a lot of, there's, well, I guess I would say it's rigorous, rigorous is the word I would use for that. So that's another difference. So traditionally, your curriculum is based on content. Competencies are based on skills, so the content drives the skills, which is pretty exciting. I'm excited about that as a science teacher, that I'm really working to improve the skills of my students so they're, they'll be ready for their next year. The last major difference that I'd like to point out is that in the traditional-based system, the student work is assessed by teachers using their own individual standards. So individual rubrics, we're kind of on our own islands. Competency-based system, we're really working for teachers to collaborate together to create common assessments, common performance tasks, and really working together to make sure that they're on the same page. We can all get there on our own, but really making sure that our students have the same experience. And I think overall, it's just really important to know that we really believe that competency-based learning allows for students' learning to be transparent for the, for our students and our parents. Thanks. Lynn's going to talk to you a little bit about math.
Hi, I'm Lynn Ellsworth and I teach seventh grade math, and I just wanted to share a few benefits that I've seen in my experience with competency-based learning. This is the second year that the math department has been using this grading system. We get together with our colleagues and we work towards common assessments. We made a common rubric that all of us use on the assessments. And in order for students to earn a MEETS, they need to show their solid mathematical reasoning, and I really believe that having that has made all students make a very good effort in clearly showing all of their work on their assessments. I also like how all the competencies are clearly defined, so students and parents know exactly what they're learning and what they did well on and what they might need to look back on and reassess on. But the biggest benefit to me is I really believe students are leaving the year knowing more math, in my case. They, in the traditional system, they would get their grade back and they'd go on to the next unit and that was that. Where in this new system, they're looking at their test and they're asking themselves, what didn't I know? Why didn't I earn that MEETS? And they go back and they fill that gap that they, in the traditional system, would have never filled. So they're taking ownership and responsibility for their learning, they're making a plan to learn what they didn't understand the first time, and I think ultimately they're learning more, and that to me is the greatest benefit of this new system. Up next is Val Wolfson.
Hi, I'm Val Wolfson, and I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience in wrapping my mind around competencies. This summer, I worked with a team of teachers and attended some trainings and developed a set of competencies, a draft of competencies to work with this year. And one of my desires is to really wrap my mind around how this would change my instruction, my curriculum, and just a couple insights I've gathered is that putting skills over content, so the content, I'm approaching it a little bit differently, is really the vehicle for the skills. I've always been a deep believer in differentiation and I've seen that this has allowed me to personalize students' journey towards the skills in a way I haven't before. It's really opened up a few more paths towards personalized learning, which I think is definitely a strength. And the sample rubric you see displayed there is just a snapshot of something we've used with a self-designed assessment students have recently worked with, and the competencies are always laid out as the large goals. But one of the things I'm really enjoying, I'm experimenting with Jay's blessing, I'm between two worlds here. I'm still reporting in a traditional way and I wanted to have the freedom to shake things up behind the scenes to understand how I would approach this next year. And one of the things I really enjoyed in designing rubrics without points, but simply with qualitative factors, is that it's really elevated my instruction and conversation with students. So as I give them feedback, they're not asking about how to kind of manipulate their grade to gain three points, five points here. We're not having that kind of negotiation. Instead, they're reading the feedback and they're looking at what part of each category they didn't meet. And that's really where I want to be with my students, is being able to have those conversations about the goals for learning, not about points. So that's been really refreshing and insight I didn't anticipate until I gave it a try this year, so it's been really fruitful. Thank you. And Diana Pelletier will be speaking next.
So I am a fifth grade teacher and I teach English Language Arts, but I am also responsible for science and social studies. So my role here this evening is to show you our reporting system, and I don't want to screw that. There we go. All right. So this is currently what the reporting system looks like. And just so that you know, we're already taking a look at how we can even improve our existing programs. Sue Johnson has set up kind of a pilot program where teachers have been selected to kind of play around with some different options on how we can improve this, so that's already started. But you can see where we have separated out those habits of learning, which are crucial to a student's success after school, is after their school career's over, and also some of the overarching competencies. And how we report those is by using a current letter system. And we've already noticed, there's already a problem with this that I just want to point out, in that the habits of learning, we have the letter M, which represents, as we can see there, most of the time, demonstrates the skill most of the time. That's for habits of learning. We also have an M that represents meets the standard. Those are at different levels of accomplishment, and so that we're already recognizing is problematic and, you know, we're working on that. But I know as a teacher, I really appreciate being able to separate those things out so we can really determine how a child is doing. As a fifth grade teacher, we've been doing something similar to this for quite a few years now, and now sixth, seventh, and eighth is kind of, you know, getting on board with some of the things that we've been doing. And I wanted to point out that the narrative piece that you see here, I think that's really where teachers at the middle school are going to have the greatest growth over the next couple of years, because that narrative, I know for me personally, is an opportunity for me to think about that individual student and highlight specifically what they're doing really well and what they really need to work on. Because even if you look at, for example, one of the English Language Arts competencies is communicates effectively as a writer. Well, that's huge. There's a lot of standards that go into that. So when I'm reporting out on one of my students in particular, I am within my narrative listing all of those standards that I have covered for the first half of the year, and I am commenting on how well students are doing on each of those. So your child has done well with providing evidence to support their ideas. They need to continue to work on proofreading, because that's something that, you know, they haven't quite met the standard. So I really appreciate having the opportunity to have that narrative piece, whereas the traditional way of just saying, oh, you got to be on your persuasive piece. So that's kind of important. And did I miss anything about the, because I'm filling in for Jason Demers tonight, so this is the first time I've spoken about this slide. Did I forget anything? No, I'm good. All right. So next, Alita Carter's going to come up and talk about some recent surveys that we've done.
I'm going to just lower that. So I guess my, my kind of part is about how the staff feel about this. It's not just us, it's everybody working together. One of the things that we really strive to do as a committee is make sure that we listen and hear the voices of everyone in our building. So that's why we do so many surveys. We really want to be in touch with everybody. So this survey that I'm going to go over now, I'm just going over three aspects of it. We did ask other questions, so if you want more information, we're more than willing to provide that as well. But for the first three questions, this was done in October, so I feel that we've probably even grown more since then. We asked how do staff feel about transitioning to competencies in general? And just looking at the positives from somewhat okay to extremely good, right now, we are looking at 87% of our staff are pretty, they're feeling pretty good, okay? Somewhat okay to pretty good, anywhere in that, or extremely good. And 13% were saying that they were not ready. Now, I just want to show you or just speak to you about where we were a year ago, because I think that that shows our growth. Last year, when we asked around the same time, 68% of our staff were in that somewhat okay to extremely good feeling, and 30% of our staff were not at all ready. So I feel that really shows some significant growth. And then the next one is, oh, you're going to be blown away. I, well, I was. So we asked how, in terms of understanding the competencies and standards, this year when we asked about how do you feel that you know about this, 80% of our staff said pretty well to very well. We had 3% say not too well. Nobody said not at all. But last year, when we looked at this, 43% of our staff said pretty well to very well and 35% of our staff said not well. So I would say that the professional development and all of the inclusion of what we're doing, I think it really shows some, some changes in the way we're feeling as a staff. And then the last question was how did you feel about your readiness level for implementation starting in the fall of 2017? I mean, I'm a bit of an optimist, so I do see by looking at completely ready, that 28% of our staff are completely ready, that 45% of our staff are somewhat ready, and 19% are slowly getting there. I like to say that we are 93% on the road to ready for the fall of 2017. So it's an exciting process because it's really something, I think, that's built, brought our whole school community together and that we're all in the same kind of language and things, so that's my, my spot. And now we will all be available to answer any questions that you might have for us. Thanks.
So just in terms of questions, guys, it'd be kind of awkward for you to get up and down and up and down, so if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and then the board asks their questions, that'll save the time of movement.
I have a question about the logistics of all the reteaching that needs to go on, because I think that, as you say, the advantage is that you, you don't move forward if the student is not mastering. But I'm wondering in terms of teacher time and just resources, if you have, like, some kids are able to move on and some kids who have to be re-taught these skills, and then maybe some kids who even go into another grade but are lacking some competency, so you have to have some teaching, I would think, you know, and just in terms of resources and teacher time, is that, is that an issue?
Currently, I would say it would be an issue. Our hope, and I've talked to Dr. Morrison, Mr. Allen, and Mr. Principal Rashad about this, a big aspect of making this work is making our schedule, which is jam-packed with awesome activities and great programs, making our schedule more streamlined in the aspect that we have, the RTI time, where we have that as a, really a mandatory four or five days a week, where that's really either providing enrichment for students or working on competency recovery. Right now, we have a system where it's a couple days a week and it's, I wouldn't say it's scattered, we're all doing, doing work, but if we can streamline that system and really take advantage as a school of using 50 minutes per day as part of our schedule, I'll leave that up to Jay to figure out, but that'd be fantastic.
Well, I mean, if that, where would that, where would that 50 minutes come? There'd be 50 minutes that comes from someplace else.
We, we have an RTI block right now. I know Jay's been thinking of some ideas of trying to line up more teachers at that time, just for example, trying to get more, just in my subject math, more math teachers available at the same time so that we have kind of a math RTI program. So, for example, my team has a block for it every morning right now, but our resources are a little thin because of the scheduling. But if we're able to streamline the schedule a little bit more, then we'll have more resources where we can reach those students four days, four or five days a week. So it's, it wouldn't be replacing anything, it would just be tweaking things so more people are lined up at the same times and not taking out any other time, just using that RTI block a little bit more streamlined.
And one of the conundrums we have as a middle school is that not every team has the same allotment of time, meaning just the way fixed blocks and free blocks are rotated through the schedule. So for example, we've been fortunate on our particular grade level, we've been able to fit in three RTI blocks. And one of the things that we, after doing Sandborne Regional Training, is we adopted something they were doing, which was old-fashioned RTI, or traditional RTI would be, you would hold a child for six to eight weeks and pre and post measure, but that's not so authentic to what we actually do in the classroom, and when a student needs an intervention, they need it sooner rather than later. And in different subjects, the needs are different, so what we have set up is a rotating, we invite students. And so in those three days, they may be requested in math one day, social studies another day, and then language arts, but it allows social studies and science, who often take a back seat to language arts and math naturally, to have that opportunity to work with students. And really, we are supporting their literacy skills and we are supporting their mathematical reasoning, but we're having it, the opportunity to do it through our subject area. So that has been very helpful and, you know, we're also blessed in the Oyster River community that kids come to us with many strengths. We're diverse, but the number of students who need extremely intensive intervention are pretty small. So, you know, we have that in terms of the cohorts and how they're organized. The other thing about reteaching is that often it's not 10 hours worth of re-instruction. Usually, it's looking back at a test or an assessment or a project and taking some time with the student to ensure understanding however that looks, and that could be through a conversation, it could be through something written, it could be through something on the computer, and then you revisit and check in and see if they've understood. So the good news is, is that it doesn't mean a student has to redo an entire project or an entire test. You're really kind of targeting the area of misunderstanding. You're really kind of targeting the area of misunderstanding. So there are challenges. I would agree with what Erin is saying. What we find is that different teams have different allotments of time. But we're seeing some pockets of success that we feel it's manageable, so.
The only other thing I wanted to add in is I've been pretty impressed with some of my students. They'll take it as their own initiative to learn the material and come back to me and say, this is what I did to learn, you know, what I didn't know on the test. And they'll just reassess right then and there, and it's a quick process. So it's not always a lengthy process for them.
Well, actually, it's kind of along your lines, because if you watched the confirmation hearing on the Secretary of Education, there was one exchange with Al Franken that talked about growth versus proficiency. And actually, in my mind, what I like about doing as a team approach is that the question came up, what if a kid can't achieve competency? You know, because not everybody will. And to my mind, as you guys are doing this collaboratively, it's trying to reduce the stigma that not everybody gets it the first time. And that if you can have a team approach where extra help is the norm, or help, it's not somehow stigmatized that, you know, I didn't get it the first time, that I'll try again, it's just a much more effective way to do stuff.
Could I just have one follow-up to that? Would there be an issue with so much of this tutorial time being spent on bringing kids up to the competency, as opposed to the tutorial time, taking somebody who's good and helping that person become really good? I mean, is it, could it be slanted, is it slanted towards almost kind of not remediation, but a kind of like dealing with a kid who's troubled with the standard, where it would seem to me that you also want to have, and this maybe goes to a question I had when you guys were here last time, about excellence, where pushing people beyond the standard and having them be just superb? Does that question make sense?
Yes, just real quick, many middle schools, and Val'll touch on that too, they call it win time instead of RTI, it's what I need. So exceptional students who are above and beyond meeting competencies, they might be working on a unique program with a, you know, LA teacher, math teacher, working on standards for the upcoming year. For example, sixth graders working on seventh grade competencies and standards. So that's kind of what we would be doing. So our, say, an exceptional student who is above and beyond, again, isn't just sitting independently reading, they're working with an educator as well to meet their needs, really. And as Erin said, in terms of the schedule, it's, I mean, that's the thing that shows up in the back of my eyelids, honestly, most nights, as a middle school principal, in terms of the schedule. Particularly during the academic year, my administration, Bill Sullivan and Andrew Benuskevich, we talk literally about it daily, you know, how can we make it better for our kids and staff? But it's going to be a challenge. I mean, it's not going to be perfect. Ideally, as you've probably heard me say this, if everybody's kind of equally miserable about the schedule, I've created the best possible schedule for my staff and students. But it's definitely going to be a challenge. I'll turn it over to Val real quick, because I know she probably had a point.
I certainly don't have a complete answer to your question, but I have, I want you to know that we are mindful of that as a staff. And I know personally on our team, we've been really thinking about that, taking care of all students and not just looking at remediation or lifting up students who are struggling. And one of the things we've been experimenting with, with success, is Genius Hour projects, which is part of Google's concept of devoting 20% of their time towards passion projects. And that has opened up some really interesting doors. So we've had students reporting to our classroom, they've written out a proposal, we have some structures in place for them, but it's also allowed them to go much deeper into approved projects. So we have a sense of what they're doing, we're guiding them and asking them some difficult questions. So that's one area that we feel that we're beginning to do a better job nurturing that population. And, you know, there's also this dynamic, we're finding that when we think about what meeting a competency means, as a staff, we have a lot of important pedagogical work around that and the depth of knowledge behind that. And I can say, as I'm experimenting with that this year, individually with students, when there is an apparent need to push kids further with depth of knowledge, I'm working on that in my instructional methodology. It doesn't mean I catch every student and meet every need, but it's certainly an awareness of how we help kids grow further. At the parent meeting, there was an interesting point that came up about, you know, this sort of system really lends itself towards a growth model, and that also means that kids don't always grow in alignment with their biological age. And so, you know, you can see this is really pushing the limits of education and what it means to have age progression. And I think, you know, your question is pushing at that edge, is how do we meet the needs of students while organizing them in a meaningful way, so.
Just wanted to point out, four of us were at the presentation last week, so it doesn't show disinterest or not asking questions. But on the last point, and education isn't my field, but thinking of when I was in school, I would work, I'd get an A, and maybe that came easy or not, but that became the goal. And there was no drive for me to do better, because I knew I had an A. And in this model, I hear there's maybe more potential, perhaps, to not focus on what that grade level is, but to focus on learning. And my objective was always the grade and not learning. So it would be my hope that this model switches that focus.
I had my parent hat on last time, now I have my school board member hat on. And I think one of the really important things that's going to need to happen, and I think you guys are all very aware of these challenges, but is going to be two things. One, communication with parents. And I think in middle school in particular, it's a challenge, because for some parents, their kids stop talking to them in middle school. So, but I think it's still, once you start doing this RTI, and maybe that enrichment for some kids and remediation for other kids, I think that, I'm not sure how you're all going to solve that, because I think it's going to be potentially time-intensive. And I think the only reason I think that communication is going to be very important is because that's going to be where you get your parental support, and that's where you're going to get the buy-in from the community, is when they're really understanding the incredible work that you're doing for their kids and how you are essentially sort of, you know, this will allow you to modify things for different kids with a little more flexibility. And going along with that, I think the other piece is about feedback. And I think as you, as a staff, continue to talk about it, I think that's amazing. I think it'll be important to try to find other ways of getting both student and parent feedback. Parent forums, we saw the other night, tough. It's tough to get people there. I'm not a huge fan of Survey Monkey, but I have to say, a Survey Monkey, where you get a higher participation rate, may be more valuable. I just think it's going to be, as this sort of morphs and changes through the years, I think it's going to be really, really important to get that feedback from beyond staff, because it impacts how we all help our kids get better.
So you mentioned scheduling, Jay, and it's like, and I know it's a nightmare, but I'm wondering, as we implement this in the fall of 2017, that we actually look at the middle school schedule? I mean, it seems to me ironically, when we implemented full-day kindergarten, one of the things that we said is we don't want to try to pack it, you know, and fill every minute. And yet, we've gone in the opposite direction with the middle school, we've kept, we're adding, we keep adding more and more things into the schedule, and we filled like literally every millisecond of your day. And you're trying to do an expansion of your program with more time to work with students. And I'm wondering if we're beginning to, we've hit the ceiling or we're working against ourselves, and if it would be a good thought next year to really prioritize? Is it, have we packed it too much? What are our priorities? How can we make the day more effective? And again, as you implement it, you'll begin to see, I think, what's not working and that we could revisit that.
My question is on reporting. So say a student has exceeded expectations, which is possible with the guidelines. I know last time you guys talked to us, you talked about an exceed standard, which I don't know is there anymore. Like, how do you, one, report that out? Is that in the teacher comments? And two, how do you keep a student motivated if, because I mean, obviously, it's possible to exceed, and I get that there's extra stuff that they could do, but I just, struggling with how they would keep a drive if there's nothing really to achieve after you meet the expectations?
Great, great questions. That's something our staff has talked about at a good deal of length, the three-tiered system, the four-tiered system, can you exceed a standard? One of the shifts when we're just talking about it as a committee and then we sent out a Survey Monkey to our staff is, instead of calling it exceeding a standard, since we're talking competencies, now we're talking about can a student be exemplary on a competency? And largely, I think, they probably can. I think generally, the staff thinks that. Then your question is, how do we show that? So we actually just sent out a survey within the last 10 days or so, that asked staff, would you prefer a four-tiered system that has from beginning to exemplary, or would you rather have a three-tiered system that goes to meets, but then has a narrative that describes that exemplary, that exceptionality? So the results came back from our staff, and I was going to share this anyway with the board, that we can see having a four-tiered system, but as a staff currently, we like the idea of three tiers with narrative, which every teacher would be writing, that shows exceptionality. As far as student motivation, that's going to be one of our biggest jobs as a staff, is to, because a lot of students, as you know, are out for the grades, and not everyone will change their mindset. But if we implement this correctly and really are on the same page as a staff in how we educate our students, hopefully, the learning, you know, ideally, the learning would be the goal. And if they do exceptional work, they're going to, they will see that reflected in their narrative. So it's kind of a mix of change of mindset with some notification of that in the comments. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, definitely.
Can I just follow, sorry, can I follow up on that? Because you talk about narrative, but if you have like, say, five classes of 20 kids, and you have seven competencies for those kids, you're talking about 700 data points, right? You're talking about a lot, right? You know, if you have 100 kids, and for each of those kids, there's seven competencies that you're going to be, I mean--
Throughout a school year?
Yeah, I guess you probably aren't dealing with all the competencies at the same time. I guess my question is, in terms of just the energy that it takes to write that much narrative on that, you know, is that, how do you do?
Yeah, and I mean, if it was that much narrative, it would be obviously a fair amount of work. I'm thinking of, like, in math, we have seven, we're at the halfway point, we're into our fourth competency. So I would have written narrative on my 77 kids, three competencies. But then a lot of kids are at meets, and, you know, I don't think that needs a long, I'm thinking more of the longer narratives for the kids that are exceptional, so that we have that separation. So I think some kids' narratives would be longer and others would be shorter. But yeah, it would probably be, I was talking to a colleague today, four, five, six hours of narratives through the halfway point, and maybe equivalent to that the second half of the year. But I don't think it would be overwhelming personally, but it's something we need to talk about.
Wouldn't the narratives fall on both extremes? I mean, you're talking about the exceptional, but I would assume that the narrative really would be not only the exceptional, but if you're the--
Beginning, yeah.
Whatever.
Is there something that the parents need to know that's not visible right there, that really are challenges or really exceptional? If it's, you're right on, you're meeting, you're meeting, you know, give a personalized comment, but I don't think it needs to go through every test. But it's more, you're right, the more challenges, the more exceptional, the longer the narrative, and the more on-grade level, the shorter the narrative, is how I would see that working.
I just wanted to say that I think it's going to be really important that we're careful about our mindset on what meets the competency really means, meets the standard. That's not down here. When I'm showing students example work, I'm showing them exemplars, I'm showing them work up here, and that's what meets the standard means. And so when you're talking about exceptional work, sure, I do have a small handful of students that probably go above what I would see a fifth grader doing in somebody's competencies. And I do make comments on that in the narrative to point out, yes, they are reading above grade level, and that's impressive. Their writing is, you know, however I want to put that in the narrative. But the point that I want to make is, let's not minimize what meet the standard means. I find, like, people are saying that, well, it meets the standard, we need an Excel. Well, if you sit in my classroom, the students are going to be like, no, meeting the standard is enough. Like, I'm not sure how much more I can do. So I just wanted to add that little.
I just want to add two real quick things about that, because this is something that comes up. You know, when we talk about student motivation, I happen to know Troy's lacrosse coach, and I have no doubt, if Troy wasn't exhibiting the appropriate motivation, you know, on the field, that his coach would probably let him know. Same thing I look at as a LA teacher or a science teacher, if Troy isn't giving the appropriate effort in the classroom, it's as simple as in the narrative. Troy needs to give a better effort in class X. I know he has far greater potential. It's those type of narratives, and please know this, I am definitely not trying to create far more work for my teachers. I see narratives as Troy is the most exceptional writer I have for the Mother of the River this year, or Troy's, you know, one of my more exceptional calculus students this year. Those types of narratives, I think, are extremely meaningful, for one, to the student and parent, instead of, you know, a huge, long paragraph. And it might just be, Lynn might put a narrative where, you know, Jay needs to continue to work on his multiplication of fractions. That's something you might want to work on over the summer through our iExcel program, instead of just writing, have a great summer. So those are just kind of quick examples, but please know, all of you on the board, I do not, as principal, want my teachers spending, you know, 20 hours on Super Bowl weekend with reporting due this Monday about huge narratives. But there are some students where you might need to be a little bit more elaborate and wordy in terms of where our students are. So, thank you.
First of all, I just want to say a big thank you to all the work. I mean, this is a ton of work, and I did attend the parent forum as well, and was very impressed. I'm really glad that you are going to stick with the three-tier, and, you know, because I, we're talking about wellness and trying to take stress off our students, and while we want them to excel, I'm just really glad that that seems to be the direction. The only thing, I just want to make sure, in terms of the logistics of kind of where we go from here, how this all fits in with the board, because I know at some point, we have to actually approve the change. And I'm assuming that there's going to be a little bit more tweaking, especially in terms of that, like the M, you know, things like that a little bit before the end of the year. So I guess I'm wondering, is how is that going to get back to us? I also want to make sure that I, because I don't have a student in the middle school, that I do get an opportunity. I appreciated having the sample tonight, but just having an opportunity to sort of see that final product, that sample of that final product, before we make that decision.
So this work that they've been, that the middle school has been doing, is going on two years. And the goal is to have two additional presentations to the school board this winter and spring, with the final decision of the board being this spring, so that the staff can prepare for the fall. So the questions tonight are helpful, they'll come back again and refine, and they'll come back one more time with the final revisions, and they'll be ready to make a recommendation to you regarding all the work that they've done.
I just have one more question, then I will shut up. Maybe. As a, currently, is the fifth grade a standards-based report card, which is different than a competency-based report card? So currently, we have essentially three different kinds of report cards in the middle school, right? We have a competency in math and maybe music?
PE.
You want to talk about what the plans are?
So I guess I have a question, okay, then follow-up is, so would this then put all grade levels on the same kind of report card?
Yes, absolutely. Currently, grades five in every, you know, every area, all our specialists, like for example, Alita's doing competency art, music, mathematics, there's only three areas that we aren't yet doing competencies fully across the school, and that's in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in language arts, science, and social studies. But again, we do have people like Andrew and others and Val, who are kind of like in a-- in a dual system, even though they're reporting points in letter grades, they're working on competencies.
Moving forward, though, what's the vision?
The vision is, I would love it if you gave me the green light, so I can, we can move forward on this sooner than later, so my staff can be ready to be prepared. I think it's also really important for me to share that, I look at this as, when we do have a final, say, sample for you for the fall, we're going to revisit this year by year, and continue to make the appropriate improvements for our students and families. And I look at this, again, as I told people last week, this, you know, this is a journey, not a destination. So I would foresee myself, at the very least, coming back, at the very least yearly, in reporting to school boards in terms of where we're at, and where we're going to continue to head. So, does that help?
Currently, though, K through five is on one system, which is standards-based reporting. We're looking six to eight for the competency, and then, I would tell you, though, that one of the things that started to percolate up, because I think, at the elementary level, they dove into the standards-based reporting when, you know, Common Core was first coming out, and you may remember, initially, we took all of the standards of Common Core, and they were being reported on, so teachers were reporting on-
140.
Yeah, 140-something standards. And I think what's happening at the elementary level is they're just kind of beginning to see the work that's happening at the middle school and saying, gee, can we kind of go back and reconfigure what we're doing to potentially make it more meaningful that way? So I think it's a little bit backwards, but thank you to the middle school for taking on this challenge, and I would see eventually us getting to a system that's much more smooth that way. In addition to the work that the high school is ongoing doing with competencies, which, that will be another conversation for another day.
And again, I just close, again, I greatly appreciate the work that my staff, I apologize Aaron for forgetting you earlier, but one of the things I'm starting to see is, other schools, you know, want to follow our lead. Newmarket came over to visit with us last week. I have the K-8 people from Barrington knocking on my door. I'm getting emails from schools across the state to come and want to visit us. I've been pushing these other schools back, though I want to help them out, because, you know, I value my staff's time, and they'll, for example, be going down to present at the NELMS conference, so when these other schools, I just got an email today from Kira Saz, Jay, I want to come down and visit your staff and students. I say, no, I'm sorry, you know, my staff are already busy. If you want to see what we're doing, come visit us at NELMS. But I just want to share that with the board, that I feel really good about, you know, the leadership my teachers are taking on with this, and there's other, many other schools that want to come see and visit them, and what they're doing in the classroom with our students, so.
So, I'm going on Tom's question. I'm still unclear on what can parents and students expect to be seeing. I get the K-5, that's very clear.
Yep.
But what can they be expecting to be seeing in the fall, assuming you get the green light from the board, when they get their progress reports and report cards? Are they still expecting to see what we're seeing now, which is letter grades in some areas and not in others? Are they expecting to see the meets in every subject area, including algebra? And-
Algebra's a tricky one, because that's a currently, like a high school-level credit course, but I've been working behind the scenes with Heather McEnoff, and will, with Suzanne, where I would like to go to a true competency-based approach in Algebra I at Oyster River Middle School. So, when my Algebra I students complete and earn their high school credit, they're going to go to the high school with a list of competencies, with all their strengths, and what they can do, and why they earned that credit. So they would no longer be going up to the high school with an 84 or a 92 average. It would be to the high school with a credit, and it would be a full competency-based approach in all subject areas, including Algebra I. I haven't told my Algebra I teachers yet, but that's, that's where I would like to go.
Breaking, breaking news.
Yeah. They know that, they do, because I've told them that before, but.
As I've mentioned a few times, I had the opportunity to go to New England Association of Schools, I can't remember the exact name now, conference last spring, which was all about this competency-based learning. One of the, it's a caution, because one of the things I heard there is that it's really the NCAA that's not, hasn't caught up to the competencies, and that it's students that I'm seeing some nods, that students who are planning to go through NCAA clearinghouse still have to have grades. So, it's just, it's, I'm sure that's changing, I'm sure that's going to catch up, but I think that's part of the reason why the high school is like a whole ball of wax, whatever. You know, not that they're not having competencies, but in terms of the reporting of their grades, that's what I heard pretty clearly.
Yeah, luckily, I'm a middle school principal, so I don't have to have, tackle some of those issues. But again, as I shared last week, please know, I've done other, further research on this in terms of, parents have asked me, what about private schools, Jay? I've contacted PEA and their head of academics. I contacted Burwick Academy and St. Thomas, just those three, because those are kind of our local private schools, and the person at PEA actually said, Jay, I agree with you, it's time we revisit how we grade our students. And Burwick Academy and St. Thomas agreed, it'll have no impact on our students in a competency-based approach, whether it's in science or Algebra I, that those kids will be, they think very positively, our students, so the bottom line, it would have no impact on our kids. So it's important for everyone to hear that.
Troy, the last question? I just have one really quick one. So, I'm just concerned about the variability between like a meets compared to a regular grade scale. So when you're condensing a 0 to 100 grade scale into three values, I just, I just don't, it just seems like it's hard to compare, because say, somebody that would have gotten like a 90 is the same to getting a 100, like, how do you, that's just the one thing I'm struggling with. I know it's probably dumb, but-
It's not dumb, I mean, I think it's a great question, Troy, and a lot of people struggle with it. I mean, we've had that point value system as forever, in terms of that, and we do recognize, particularly with our students, they want to go above and beyond and be exceptional students and meet their potential, quite frankly. But again, if we have the standard of meets, it's exceptional work. Again, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I'm sure your lacrosse coach, his meets, the standards, will be a state championship this spring. So again, it's have an extremely high level of standard for all of our students, and making sure we get all of our kids to meet their full potential. If they don't, again, and kids aren't working with their potential, it's our responsibility as educators to try to get them there, and frankly, again, reaching out, communicating to parents about where our kids at, because I do think the communication piece is extremely important. Right now, you get a 90 in a class, well, what does that mean? What does that mean you can do? What does that mean you can't do? I mean, there's 10 points there that you're missing something. So again, going to a competency-based approach is just making everything extremely transparent for our parents and students. So, and we will have some growing pains with this, definitely. As I like to say, you know, we're going to continue to work through this system, make it the best it can possibly be for all our kids, and it's not going to be a fixed system, ideally, when the school board approves it, so. Does that help?
Yeah, more or less.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate your time tonight.
Nice job.
Okay, so we have the motion to approve the policy IKF, and I think, we're having it at this point, because we have representatives from the PE program who'd like, I understand, am I correct, you'd like to speak on this? Is that?
Love to.
Okay. And obviously, the issue is going from one and a half to one credit, I assume, but you can speak to, speak to it.
Yes.
Just identify yourself, and then-
I will. My name's Don Maynard, and this is my colleague, John Warren, and this is our colleague, Emily Rogers, and we, you know, yeah, we're here to talk to you a little bit about seeing our credit possibly reduced from one and a half to one. I don't think there's any program that wants to see their credit reduced. We've had some positive discussions with Suzanne, and Todd, and Dr. Morris about the direction of our program, which I think is fantastic. I think we can do those things without seeing that credit reduced. You know, I know that we've made a proposal whereby we see our freshmen for the entire year, currently, they're with us for one semester before they go off to help. We feel that that would be something that we can make a positive experience by seeing them again all year. And then, if we can keep that other half of credit, allowing our sophomores, juniors, and seniors, at some point in those three years, earn that half credit, that .5. You know, there's been some discussion about some electives that we might be able to offer, possibly, you know, a little better upgrade to our fitness facility, our so-called weight room, which you guys should take a walk through sometime soon. Also have talked about possibly a climbing wall, which we've been trying to raise money for, trying really hard, but you don't know how many chunks of steel you got to get to raise $50,000. So, I think we've raised about four. So anyway, you know, we have a lot of ideas, some things I think would be fantastic for our upperclassmen. You know, again, with ELOs, you know, we have other things that we offer. We offer PE mentor programs that could possibly be tied into that half credit. There's independent studies, possibly. We just see a lot of things that could happen with that half credit, because in my opinion, and I think I can speak for John and Emily, you know, any reduction in credit seems to me to be a step back. You know, we talk about physical, emotional wellness, and I just feel like we lose that credit, I just don't see how that's a step forward for us. I don't know if Emily and John would like to add anything? If you guys like to throw some question at us, questions at us, we're here.
One of the alternatives would be for you to create a series of electives that would be, and now you're going to think that all the, and possibly with some support from the board over a period of time, so that you could, in terms of facilities, that would help. Now, that would be the alternative. It sounds to me like you don't, you think that the current system is, you know, better than having the alternative where you folks would have electives that people would, could choose to take. Do you think they wouldn't choose to take them, or you-
Well, I'm concerned about that. You know, we currently have one period of the day where we have juniors and seniors come in. You know, the numbers were good first semester, they're not good second semester. That class is down to 12 kids, 11 kids, right now. And, you know, as much as we've tried to recruit kids to keep those numbers up in that class, you know, these kids, and maybe it's partly because of the community we live in, you know, they don't necessarily make, you know, physical activity a priority, especially during their school day. You know, we've had kids tell us that if they've got first period free, they're coming in late, if they got last period free, they're heading home. We've had other kids tell us, they just don't want to, you know, they don't want to sweat during the day, you know, as juniors and seniors, as silly as that sounds. So that's the type of thing that, you know, that we kind of are battling a little bit. You know, and a lot of the kids feel, you know, if they're going to get into the college of their choice, that maybe they should be taking, you know, something other than a phys ed.
Not to be contradictory, but we've heard statistics in our community of how many kids are involved in athletics. So, to your point about gym and physical activity, so we have a community of kids that are very, very physically active, and then you present how the upperclassmen, you're having trouble keeping them, maintaining them, having enough enrollment, and this is the part where I don't mean to be argumentative, but my feeling is, if you're offering something that's very appealing, that's meeting the needs of the kids, that the kids are enjoying, that they're getting value from, they're going to come. And I might look at it differently, and saying, rather than locking them in because they need this credit, I would say, what can we do as a department that is going to shake the game up and make kids clamor to come and take this elective PE class? That's how I look at it.
No, I agree. You know, and I think some of the discussions that we've had in regards to possibly, you know, an outdoor ropes-type course, outdoor adventure course, indoor climbing wall, you know, upgrade to our weight room, so that we can make that attract to our upperclassmen, I think that would definitely help, you know, attract our juniors and seniors. You know, we still were having this conversation with the idea that we would have our freshmen all year. That's not something that's set in stone at this point. One thing that really concerns us is seeing kids mixed by various grade levels. For instance, if we don't have our freshmen, and they come into the high school and they take phys ed, you know, at any point between freshman and senior year, we will have classes mixed by grade level. And unless you've seen that happen, it's really, really scary for the younger kids. We've already seen it once this year, it happened five minutes into the first class we had, where the grade levels were combined. A comment was made, a freshman's face turned beet red, and we said, you know what, we got to do something, just because of the concern, again, with the age, you know, the difference in age. You know, to think of having a freshman with an upperclassman and trying to make that experience positive for them, I don't know how that can happen. They're just intimidated by the age.
And again, I see that happening with sports. I mean, you know, being anecdotal, had it been a kid who swam, she was young, and with older kids, that was incredibly important. Being a ninth grader and being with seniors was incredibly important. Having college kids come home and do that, so in a way, you're pointing this out as being an obstacle or something detrimental. To me, the mixing of the ages is something incredibly positive, that you have older kids who can, who are wiser, are role models, who've gone through things, so in a way, that too is something your department can really play on. Is that, that mixing is a-
I think there's one big, big difference. You're talking about kids who are choosing to be in a sport, that they've already got a, you know, experience in, and we deal with so many kids that walk through those doors who've had a bad experience in any sort of physical activity or sport. I keep going back to a girl, it was in my tennis class, just this year, freshman, very first day, says to me, I don't like it, I'm not good at it, I'm not coordinated, it's never been fun for me, and basically said, oh, it'd be difficult. And that girl, for the last six weeks, has walked out of our gym with a smile on her face, and that would not happen if she was in there with even a sophomore, forget junior or senior, because it just, you know, it's not something that she's been comfortable with. And that happens with a lot of our kids. You know, it's not an easy place for them to be. You know, they feel like they're not coordinated, that it's not something they're good at, and we are able to provide them an experience that they do feel good about. And, you know, the situation you're talking about, these are kids that are good at a sport, and yes, you know, they have older kids with them, but again, they're choosing to be there, probably because they're good at it, and those older kids are there to support them. And it just, our younger kids would be intimidated to be in a class with older kids.
Don, could I ask you a question?
No.
Because you had, in our, in our meeting, Don and John, we had talked about the fact that when we did the analysis of area schools, they only had one credit, and you instantly came back with, I thought, which was a great answer. So we talked about Portsmouth only require one credit. Can you talk a little bit about what they do differently to give the board a sense of, you know, what you said, what we could be?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of differences between what we currently have established here at Oyster River High School for what we can offer in physical education, and when compared to some of the other schools like Portsmouth, who does have one credit, they do have, they have about 300 or 400 students more than we do, they have four PE teachers, and they do offer electives. But they also have a football team. With that comes a weight room. I'm not asking for a football team, but I am asking for a weight room. You know, so one thing that we, maybe that's the wrong night to bring up football, I apologize. For us to be able to offer a, an exciting weight room or weight training offer for an elective credit for students, our facility just doesn't provide that. I don't know if you've seen it, but we invite you to come and see it. We have treadmills from the 80s. You know, they short out if the kids try to hit incline, they'll shut off. So, you know, that's, that's one example of where we are. They also have an amazing adventure course. We don't have one. That is an exciting opportunity for students to try something new, something that they won't probably get outside of these walls, which is one of the biggest differences between a physical education program and athletics, in that we try really hard to present students with opportunities that they're not going to see again. We do think- We do things that they don't get to do. We expose them to opportunities that they don't see other places. We take great pride in presenting something to our students that they haven't seen before or tried before. And they can be simple things, as simple as juggling. What a great hand-eye coordination skill to have as an athlete or non-athlete. It's something that everybody can accomplish, and it's a great practice. We do a little bit of that. I'm not saying that's our whole elective program, but we can come up with electives, but we also believe that if we can maintain a program for our freshmen, if we can say, you know what, we're doing this because this is really good for you. We talk about wellness all the time. We have units that are mandatory that include CPR, includes dance. We don't want our freshmen to have to dance with a senior. That's uncomfortable. When we have a freshman group together and they're all on the same page, it's easier for them to get through it. In athletics, we want team captains. We need leadership. The coach can't do everything by themselves, makes perfect sense. Younger kids can see those older kids working harder at skill. We get that. We have mentors. Our mentors are upperclassmen. They're kids that come back to us that want to help, and they help us with students. That's a great place for those kids. So if, if we get to a point where we have to go elective, we can do that, of course, but we need, we need some help. We are not prepared.
I want to transition to Emily because in the same conversation that the two of us had, she shared with us the online version, if you will, of phys ed, because we talk about this issue here at the board all the time, how much we do not like V-Lax as a PE option.
So yeah, so last year, to combat our numbers for students going over to V-Lax and also not really having an adult in the building to go to with V-Lax, it's all, you know, faced, through a computer, you can't actually get FaceTime with a teacher to go through the materials. So what we kind of did, and I took the lead role on, was creating an online program with a full semester of activities for students to choose from. So this was a potential opportunity for students to sign up through this online course. I would run it through Google Classroom style, and students would complete different units through this online program that we also go through every day with our students in the classroom. Some of the units, an example would be an ultimate frisbee unit. They were learning different frisbee skills, they were writing some papers on frisbee-related activities, looking at Major League Frisbee. They were then building a frisbee golf course in their backyard, or going to a park, or coming here and building a frisbee golf course in whatever they would like, nine holes, and taking a video or taking pictures of them going through that course and completing it. So this was an alternative for students who would not be able to fit this class into their schedule, PE traditional with us, and they could sign up for the online version that I created, and it would create a teacher liaison in the building. So if they had a question, they could pop into my office at any time, ask me it, and I'd be more than happy to help. And it was really cool projects, a whole bunch of different stuff. They were learning about dance, they're still learning about golf, doing team sports, doing individual sports, lifetime fitness. And so they were covering all the material that we found absolutely most important, we find in our program to be what students need to learn.
The reason I wanted to broaden the conversation is because I wanted to share with the board that in our meeting, you know, the phys ed staff absolutely categorically did not want to see the reduction in the half credit. And we had a lengthy conversation about the logic and why, but the, when we left at the end of that meeting, the three of these educators were really starting to think about the possibilities. The issue is one of investment that has been brought up. The program hasn't had any investment per se for a very long time, and again, if you did go and see their equipment, it's pretty sad. So what I offered to do with them is build a strategic plan for their program where we would support it over a five-year period and put a significant investment in so we can deal with the weight room issue, we can deal with outdoor adventure, we can deal with climbing walls, we can deal with these really great ideas that would attract upperclassmen, but it's a rebuilding time for the high school program, and much needed and much delayed. So what I said to these three educators is, absolutely come and tell the board, you're not thrilled with this idea, in fact, you do not like it at all, but I want to go back to the comment here, they're also the kind of people who are willing to work with me and the board and make sure that the program doesn't diminish because it's dying on the vine, but because they're willing to invest their time and energy, and I'm willing to invest my time and energy with them, we can really make sure we have a quality program for our upperclassmen. So, you know, the point of tonight was, I never want to shut down dissent because these guys really wanted to rip my head off when they came in the room, and they didn't, and by the time we left, we were on the same page, that we felt we could make this work, even though they do not want to see the reduction in half credit. Fair?
So I was just going to say, I'm traveling, I understand what you're saying. It's like if we are going to say that you have to, you're dependent on an elective system, we have to give you a fair shot. And, you know, by that I mean that not, if you don't have any, any facilities and saying, hey, just create this elective program with no facilities, it really is not us giving you a fair opportunity to build the program or to shift to an alternative. So I think, I don't know where we are in terms of our capital improvement, and it seems kind of paradoxical because we are so focused on capital improvement, but I think...
But this is, quite frankly, an area in capital improvement that we haven't actually not gone in.
I know.
And it's time.
It has been proposed, we have proposed in the past, including the PEP grant, which we tried to pursue quite a few years ago, you know, even the multipurpose room, when we, when we first got this new school, even back then, we started considering that as a community-based fitness center, that we, you know, if we could have pulled that off. That was something that we did pursue, it just didn't, it didn't really get a lot of progress, because there were matching funds involved at the time, and there were so many other expenses that the district was dealing with that it just not, that was not the direction that we were told the district was going to go. And that was very clear to us, so we waited once again. And then here we are again. So ultimately, of course, we would like to keep our credit in half. We think we're good for kids. I think the activities that we provide students are healthy and a great, comfortable opportunity for them to express themselves in a physical environment. It's, it's a great experience, and that's one huge difference. In our class, it's a physical experience that involves physical effort. And one of the bigger problems that we haven't brought up in terms of elective credit in physical education is that we have a full-blown, open campus and free-period concept here that also doesn't exist in all these other schools that we are often comparing ourselves to. Students don't always leave school in the middle of the day in other places. If they needed to be here, I think, we believe that they would fill electives that would be fun and relaxing for them, not necessarily extremely demanding academically. And we would be one of those electives because we are fun. There's no question about it. So, you know, with that said, if a student has, the only elective that we have right now is a junior-senior class, and that takes place at lunch, it's period eat. And we have students, one of them is in my advisory, who's a phenomenal athlete, and he is absolute, I tried to convince him because we have low numbers, my buddy, come play, we're going to have a great time. I go home, you know, I've had an hour and twenty, or 120, hour and 20 minutes, I think he told me, there's no way, I'm not going to do that. So when they have the opportunity to not take a class and leave, it's, it's difficult to convince them to take an elective in probably most things, especially one that's going to require them to sweat, bring a change of clothes, potentially shower in the middle of their day.
Great, guys, thank you. Troy?
I just have my input of my experience with physical education that I just wanted to share with the board. I was extremely happy with my time in the physical education department. I had a lot of fun, it was great, and I would have continued into advanced PE in the elective system if I just had, you know, time in my schedule. And I think that having that extra half credit, I'm definitely in the camp of keeping that credit, half credit, because I think it gave me, I don't want to say an excuse, but like a chance to do more PE where I normally, if I didn't have to do that, I probably wouldn't have continued with PE, given the pressures to excel in everything else, do, you know, a million APs, do this, 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 and this. And I think that physical education is a very valuable course that is unique in many ways that, I mean, you don't get that experience in any other classroom. You can say there's another elective that does a different thing, but ultimately, you're still in a classroom. And I think that it's a great experience for kids to do, especially in the freshman and sophomore year. When you get into junior-senior year, yeah, kids want to do, go on their own and structure their own learning and do different things. And that's my hesi, why I'm a little hesitant with going into an elective-based system and why I think keeping the credit would be best. I mean, if that's not, that's just my input on it, I don't know how logistically the plan has gone in, and also our weight room is awful, so.
Thank you.
Just a little background on that weight room, I can't remember the last time any money was put into that. Even what we have now was given to us by Planet Fitness.
We were given $17,000 when the, when the new gym amazing was built. And Don Lafferty told us, spend it well because that's all you're going to get.
Our, we're actually, our varsity teams are fundraising for our use of getting more gym equipment. Our varsity teams are doing it because we just, everything is either, is in short demand or it's broken, or it's really old, not enough, and it's, it puts us in kind of a tough spot to compete in especially contact sports with teams, because, that are just stronger, you know?
So, hearing all of this, I'm just, I'm just wondering if this is the right time to even, like, vote on, on this change. I'm really kind of feeling like we just need to postpone this and maybe wait another year and see, because we, obviously, we don't have money in the budget to do some of this investment this, this year, unless something really changes with the retirement or whatever. But, so I guess my, my, I'm just wondering if it would make more sense to kind of maybe revisit this next year.
The only thing I would put out there, Denise, is that part of what's happening is, going back to Troy's point, but taking it from a different direction, the number of V-Lax courses in PE is increasing, it's not decreasing. We have almost three dozen kids who are bypassing the whole system now by going to V-Lax. The, the bigger issue in relation to the half credit isn't about PE, it's about the master schedule itself. So if the, if the board decides to wait a year, then some of the issues that we'll have to deal with management-wise are not going to be the things that the PE department wants us to do. For example, we will have to go to multi-age classes. Right now, kids in Troy's category are taking courses, they're taking advanced courses in the sciences or the maths or what have you, and when they get to their senior year, they're, they're going to V-Lax. We have, I mean, it's, it's, the, the issue for the master schedule is, is pretty powerful. And so, you know, even if you don't eliminate, if you don't eliminate the half credit, then we're going to have to break through the master schedule on PE, and it's not what these guys want either. Go ahead.
I guess, but I'm not really understanding because if it's a status quo, it's already set up now, just...
The status quo is that all the kids take phys ed and health in their freshman and sophomore year.
Right, right.
If we go into another year with the increase in student population, we will not be able to keep all phys ed freshman and sophomore.
Oh.
We'll have to break into the upperclassmen, and it'll be a hodgepodge that, you've heard both John and Don say, that's not what we want. So we're trying to create an option where we can honor their core beliefs, which is the freshman kids would take it in the, in the freshman year, then health would float, sophomore, what have you, and advanced courses would, would be available. But we're not going to be able to contain the status quo in terms of keeping all of this in the freshman and sophomore year. Because we have parents who are deserting us. We have parents who've talked to this board very vehemently about wanting ELOs specifically in phys ed for rowing, for ballet, for karate, for, so the issue of kids not taking phys ed is in front of us today, it's going to get worse unless we create an option along the lines that the three of them have presented, where we have options that are enticing kids, the, the adventure course, the, you have them all, I mean, just these really exciting options that will require an investment by the board to create them so that we don't have kids, Emily's online course, so they're not taking V-Lax. I mean, V-Lax is a wonderful option in many areas, this is not one of them. And our parents and our kids are walking away from our great teachers to take something that, V-Lax is inadequate, and then they're demanding that recognition for the incredible physical effort it takes to do dance outside of our school system and rowing and karate, and the list goes on and on. So status quo, if we keep the credit in a half, means that these guys are going to be really miserable next year because we will not be able to maintain the master schedule with pushing all of our sophomores and freshmen.
But I guess, well, I just, I guess, I don't know, I'm a little bit confused because I know our numbers are going up, but they're not, they're, they're not going up higher than they've been in the past, and I know this is the way it's been, like, I'm talking, like, if we go back, what, 10 years ago or whatever, and, and my understanding is this, because my son goes back that many years, that this has basically been the schedule. I guess I'm just not understanding how all the students couldn't fit into freshman and sophomore when they did previously when we were at this, this, at this level of enrollment, which we were like 10 years ago or whatever.
I wasn't here, but what's happening now is kids are making demands on the system and parents are making demands on the system because they want to be able to get into advanced courses. And maybe that wasn't the case 10 years ago, but it's, it's a huge demand right now, big push on the master schedule right now.
Sir, I'm confused too because I'm hearing you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you go to the one credit, you're going to have multiple, kids in multiple grades in the same class, did you say that?
We don't know yet.
We're not sure. That's a concern.
We're hopeful that we can have...
Because if they, if they take one, you know, because if they just have to take one credit, they might take one semester in a freshman year and then, you know, is that, then take the other half some later?
That's a possibility, we're hoping that that's not what it turns out.
Okay. Our ideal situation would be to have our freshmen all year, so that we can have a full year with our freshmen, so that we can say, this is our curriculum for this year, these are the things that we believe to be important, you will definitely have options within that, but there will be three mandatory units that we believe in. One is CPR, one is a freshman fitness unit, and one is dance.
Okay.
And then after that, I apologize, we, oh, okay. And then after that, you know, numerous opportunities for other, other units that they could choose from throughout the year, and then potentially sophomore, junior, senior year somewhere within that timeframe, we would even break it down to a quarter at a time, where they might take one more semester. That would be ideal. We understand there are other struggles with that, so that might not work out for the schedule, so we're just sharing what we think would be, would work great. So a year as freshman and then one more semester throughout the next three years when they can fit it into their schedule. That could happen, and that most likely could be missed. So that's our ideal situation. Again, you know, the decision is yours, and we will do the best we can with whatever you decide, but we would like to keep our kids.
Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, about to drag us out too much, but I think another part of our program that we take a lot of pride in is the fact that it's co-ed. And, you know, we, we have girls in flag football, and, you know, obviously guys, we get, doing dance right now, and, you know, they're all learning these activities together. And if it becomes elective, there's no way around it, we're going to have activities that are boys and activities that the girls are going to take, and we're going to lose that co-ed piece. And I think that that in itself is extremely important. You know, to, to, to see one of our, you know, a freshman and sophomore girl, whatever, have a, you know, throw a touchdown pass in a football class with 80% guys and see the look on our faces, priceless. And I, we wouldn't have that, you know, because they're going to choose to do something that all the other girls are doing or all the other boys are doing. And I don't know how we can combat that.
Suzanne, did you want to have to say something?
Well, there were some questions about the schedule piece of it and what that looks like. So, and, and I obviously wasn't here 10 years ago either, so I don't know, I don't have that historical reference, but for, when we're looking at this, if we're looking at having freshmen all year long, that means we'd have to shift health out of the freshman year and move it someplace else. And we like to keep that early in their high school career, just because we want them to have that content early. So when we look at that, if we're having freshmen all year and we're pushing health to the sophomore year, if we're, if we're looking at the idea of having electives, then you really are probably looking at sophomore year, junior and senior year. But the pressure on the schedule that Heather and I have been talking about is that if we have freshmen all year, it would be easier to have that and have the elective not be a requirement, whereas if you're going to... and have the elective not be a requirement. Whereas if you're going to keep the requirement of a half-credit, then we may have to look at other options for the schedule and not have the freshmen all year. So, so it's a balance. There's, and there's no perfect scenario, unfortunately, right now that we can see. And Heather works exhaustively with Power School and with people outside of the school also, just to get an idea of how we can work this and what the options are. But if we want to have freshmen all year, I think that it's moving health to the sophomore year. Again, it's going to add additional pressures to the schedule, and I don't know how that's gonna, I don't know how possible that is.
Okay. I just, you know, I'll be quick, but I, I, I do want to say, I've, I've had the opportunity to be in many of the high school PE classes. I've, I've judged their dance contest. I've, I've played wheelchair basketball with their kids, or wheelchair handball, excuse me. And they, they do run a fantastic program. And I don't want anybody to confuse this discussion about a value judgment on the quality of the program they run. They clearly have tremendous pride. They're great people. They do a great job. And I know, no matter what we decide, the program will be excellent. That being said, we need to back up and remind ourselves of what this conversation started from. And the idea is, we have a, a model where we are trying to personalize the experience of our kids. And the goal is to create choice for our students, because we know choice engages them in the process. And ultimately, what we want to be able to do with the creation of the ELO position, and the hope that more and more kids will do exciting, great experiences with that, is to try to make it possible so kids have their schedules cleared up enough by junior and senior year. They can fully access things like going to UNH for a course, doing an internship. All the, the, the kinds of experiences that many kids, as John described in PE, they really, you know, realizing they can do something they never knew they could. That, those are great experiences. But it's also great to have a kid go out in the field and spend some time, you know, working with a, in a, in a auto mechanics business, and learning about that, and realizing that's what they want to do with their life. And so again, what we're trying to do is not take away, in fact, as I said last meeting, I, I believe that in an elective system, you know, if we're, we're able to create some great electives for kids to have, kids will choose to take them. It's, we've, this has played out historically in other departments. Every department in our high school has a choice-based model. The, the, when we talk about trying to build some flexibility into the schedule, our PE structure is the same as it's been for many, many years, where, where we are creating choice everywhere else. And so what happens is the kid who has an eye on taking that college course, or doing that exciting ELO, really needs to have more flexibility in their first couple of years to build into it either the requirements they want to do, or establish a pathway that they want to go. And I don't think it's, it's underselling us to say 73% of our kids are actively engaged in physical activity and sports. That's, that's, that's a great statistic for us to keep citing. So, it's not about whether our PE program has, is exceptional. It is. The question is, how can we open up opportunities for our kids? And if we're gonna go down the road of ELOs and personalization, this is one piece of it. And that's why this is on the table. It's not to reduce the amount of PE, it's to give kids those choices, because clearly, we're hearing from many kids who want to make that choice. Okay. I just, we, we're, we're either gonna have to vote on this, or we're gonna have to move on. We have other things we have to do tonight. So, I mean, I'm willing to continue the conversation a little bit more, but otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna run out of time, I think. Al?
So I'm gonna motion. I know, I understand, this is an extremely painful conversation, and I understand by shifting to the ELO model and to the choice model, there's gonna be growing pains at the high school. There's just no way around it. Trying to shift juniors and seniors to other things besides our internal elective, and trying to do freshmen, there's just gonna be a lot of change, and it's gonna impact a lot of the departments differently, and we're just gonna have to grow with it. I'm making the motion with the idea that what Jim is saying, that he will have a strategic plan to, to give the PE people a fair shot to come up with an elective program. And that means some way to look at the facilities issue so that they can have facilities to be fair. Because I don't think it's fair to say to you guys, build an elective program if you don't have any tools to do it. So that said, I'll make a motion to approve policy IKF graduation requirement for second read adoption.
Okay, moved by Al. Is there a second? Second by Sarah. Further questions?
This is voting on keeping it, moving it to one credit?
Yes.
I guess, I'll just say, again, I, I agree with Al that if we, you know, if we go ahead and approve this reduction, that I, we really do have to look at the facilities. I would like to definitely say that needs to be a priority for next, you know, for next year, to be able to do that. Because I, you know, just saying, I mean, I know my son very much enjoyed, you know, everything he did in, in PE. And, you know, I understand, I'm hearing the choice, and that, you're right, that is how the conversation started, is to open up choice. So, anyway. But I do want to make sure that we have that.
Sarah?
I have two things. One, I'm a traditionalist by nature, so it make, this whole ELO thing has made me very uncomfortable. I would really love to just tell kids what they have to take. But, and that's how it works at my house. No, but, but to be serious, I just, I think that with this ELO thing, I, I will, I, I am gonna, I am gonna support this, because I think I, you know, we, we, one is the, I don't want kids going away from Oyster River to handle PE. And I think this is probably, in my opinion, one of the best ways that we can keep, keep the PE piece handled here. And, and keep it, keep it physical, not keep it as a V-Lax cour-, or, I should, an online course. I don't want to single out V-Lax, but an online course. And I think, to me, this society is going to giving kids choice, and giving families choice. And families are bypassing our decision anyway. And so I, I want to try to regain some control of that. I will say that my second thing, and then Troyal, my other piece is, I am uncomfortable with the idea of, of committing to, while I think it's a great idea that we give, you know, support the, the program and the possibility of electives, I am uncomfortable making that a stipulation in the motion, because that's speaking for another board. You know, I am not running for reelection. I will not be on the board that votes for that. And I don't feel I get to have a say on that. So I am uncomfortable with, with making a part of the motion that we will absolutely fund that.
That's not part of the motion, actually.
Okay.
The motion is just to approve policy IKF.
I just said I would like to see him do a strategic plan, but the motion itself is actually just to approve the policy.
Yeah, it's not part of the motion. It's just kind of an art discussion.
I would assume that part of a strategic plan would come before us at some point. And, and there, there was also issue with tennis courts, too. I mean, there's, there's some, there's some decline that's happened here that I think this whole discussion has brought to our attention. So, so we have a motion, we have, Troy, sorry?
Uh, just one more quick thing. I'm just kinda confused. I get the ELO, but most of the time, I feel like ELOs are taken advantage of in their junior and senior year. And we're talking about freshman and sophomore year. I know, me personally, I'm involved in a full-year independent study, and I'm taking an online class, which are extended from the high school. And I went through the standard system, and I had no trouble fitting that in my schedule. So I just, I'm just kinda a little bit, and also, I know, I'm, I'm sort of a traditionalist as well. I don't know if you could tell by my comments during the competency-based stuff, but-
And start time.
And start time. Yeah. So, that's just the, the one thing that I kinda have, is, is how that all is connected. So.
Okay.
What I was gonna say earlier, and it did come back to when we first started talking about this policy, and it is, I think, what Suzanne and Todd were alluding to and saying, was that kids were trying to plan their four years. And that first year has lots of requirements. And so their schedule is full, and then they become locked in. And there might be some sequences they want where they really need all four years, but they're not able to get that first year, because they're stuck with all the requirements. So this, and, and it talks to that first year having them all for PE, it, that negated the kids being able to get where they eventually wanted to get to in that fourth year. Troy, that wasn't your experience, but that's what was presented to us. And that's why I support making this move.
Dan?
I'll try to be quick. First of all, I want to thank the three of you, because you've really eloquently advocated for your, this program, and it's obvious that you're deeply invested in it. Just going back to something we discussed earlier, I, just as a volunteer rec coach, I completely get your point about, maybe not even so much around ages, but, but putting kids in situations where, yes, they're challenged, but their level of comfort gives them the opportunity to be successful and come away from that experience feeling successful. Because I take your point that when we put kids in situations where they feel outmatched, you know, inadequate in some way, whether or not that's true, they quickly give up on that as an opportunity to grow. And I, and I completely support that idea, that we need to put these kids in groupings that are supportive of that sort of, that sort of environment where they're gonna come away having a good experience. With that said, I, I, I think what I'm hearing is the ship has sort of sailed on, you know, the trend where, you know, people are sort of voting with your feet here. They're, they're taking these opportunities elsewhere. So I'm gonna support this. I do agree with Sarah's point that we should not be putting on the next board the, you know, the sort of burden of, of taking on the strategic plan for improving the facilities. With that said, I feel a real need to commit to that. You know, I'm, I'm a little surprised that we have the situation we have, where our equipment in our weight room, for example, is so inadequate. We've just, as Tom mentioned, heard that our tennis courts are, you know, questionable, let's put it that way. So, you know, given what athletics means to this community in this district, you know, I will just say that I will do my best to support, you know, whatever that future looks like in terms of improving those facilities. But this is, this is a tough one, because, you know, you guys have made a really strong case. But I, I'm gonna support it because of, you know, what we've talked about in terms of the trends and being able to keep the schedule flexible.
Any comments? Ready to vote? So, the motion is to approve the revision of policy IKF graduation for second read. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. All as opposed? Student rep is opposed. Okay, the policy's approved. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you for laying your feet. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's nine o'clock. Let's take a five-minute break, okay? Okay, moving to some of the motions, we need a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 school calendar.
So, yes, Todd and I met with the kindergarten staff, because that was the last remaining piece of this calendar, so.
Yep. So we met with the kindergarten staff to discuss the idea of whether they, they recommended we start on the first or second day. And they felt very strongly unanimously that the second day was, was better for their kids. Reasons that they cited, number one was, it allowed the bus drivers to be able to single those kids out, so they're not dealing with everybody on that first day jostling. And they felt that was really positive. They also felt that one of the things that happens is the incoming first graders are dealing with a transition, and they actually, our kindergarten teachers actually spend a lot of time with the first grade teachers, helping transition the, the kindergarteners in. So the recommendation coming from kindergarten is to have kindergarten start the second day, with everybody else starting on the first day. We also did take a look at the professional day in January, and the moving it back one week works well between us and all of the career tech centers and so forth. It works out fine. So, we're recommending the calendar as proposed.
Okay. Could have a motion. Denise?
Our motion to approve the 2017, 18 school calendar as presented.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Al. Further discussion, questions? Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanna, I mean, I'm gonna support this, because you as administrators are saying that that's, this is the best way to do the calendar. And you have a much fuller picture than I do. I would, I would say the argument about bus drivers being able to single those kids out, that's backwards. Because if you want to be able to single out the kindergarteners, you start the kindergarteners a day before anybody else. Right? I mean, if you've got a whole bus of kids, first through fifth, and then the next day, you just add on the kindergarteners, that's not gonna be a singling out. The transition piece, I think is, you know, certainly sounds, sounds valid to me. And I, I, I hope that, that those, the first grade teachers feel supported as those kids, and, and they're pretty big classes of kindergarteners, you know, make it to that transition to first grade. Which hopefully won't be as much of a transition as it's now, full-day kindergarten to full-day. So I guess I, I would continue to ask that that, that be something that be looked at. Just, I think it's a, it, it's, it's not ideal from a parent perspective. And I'm not just talking about the, the logistics of, all of my kids are going back to school, except, except for my kindergartner. I think there's, there's a piece of, of starting together, as, if you have multiple kids at an elementary school, and you have some of them, or one of them that's a kindergartner, that starting together with big brother or sister is really a big thing, as opposed to having to sit at home when big, you know, your third or fourth grade sibling goes off to school. It is something that I think I have gotten a lot of feedback about over the years. You know, why does this happen? This just seems so counterintuitive. And I would, I would continue, as we, as we, you know, are in, are moving into our second year of full-day K, I would, I would continue to look at it.
If I could, maybe I didn't explain the, the transportation component well. On the sec-, I mean, clearly, all kids are starting their first day of school, first through 12th on the first day. If you have kindergartners in with that on the first day, they're part of that whole mix of kids who are trying to figure out where they're supposed to be in their bus stops, and the jostling, and the, the, just the guiding and direction that everybody takes. By having the kindergarten, I suppose, you know, your argument about starting the day before, that would be adding a day on the other side, might work as well. But given the parameters of our school calendar, it allowed the kindergarteners to be on the bus and be easily identifiable that second day, because they've already helped all the other kids kind of get to where they need to be. And for those kids, it's their second day, and they're already, they already know the routine of where they're supposed to sit on the bus and that kind of thing. That was, that was the feeling. And I would emphasize it was unanimously, all of our kindergarten teachers felt this was the direction that they felt they, that would work based on their experience.
Okay. We ready to vote on this? We have a motion and a second, right? This, this is how night I have to be reminded of these things. Okay. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of the calendars proposed, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Calendar's approved. There's a motion to support a letter for state funding of the, for building schools, where I think we have the Rochester model of it, right? So I think the, the motion would be to kind of craft a parallel letter to, not sure who that letter goes to, but-
I think it's the governor.
Yep.
Okay. But to kind of parallel, and to probably to authorize Jim to, to compose, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So it's somebody, I mean, it's, it's a pretty important thing that we, that's been, you know.
So the, the letters are to the governor, but then there's also ones to the state senate, and also one to representatives as well. So that's a bunch of three letters. So, and I do think it's important to send them.
To all three?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I think we should send them to the education committee. Every member who's on that education committee.
Okay. How many is that?
And remind me, we've got two, two letters.
There's two letters. One from Todd Sully.
One is building aid.
It's a different-
One's building aid, one's, uh-
Retirement.
Retirement. Right.
Yes, we're doing building aid one right now.
Okay. And, and the recommendation is that they go where?
To governor, the house, the senate, and the ed committee.
Okay. So, would you want to make the motion, Kenny, then?
Do you want, Al, you, you brought that- Do you want, Al, you, you brought that.
All right, I can make it. I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to restart the building aid funding to the governor, to, as mentioned, it was governor.
House, senate, and ed committee.
Senate, ed committee.
Okay. Moved by Al. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Maria.
It was governor.
The governor, the house, the senate, and the ed committee.
Okay, so we had the motion. We have a second, right?
Yep.
Maria's second.
Maria's second, I'm sorry. Okay, is further discussion on this? No? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay, that letter's authorized. We also have the Todd Sellig letter.
So we're doing that one.
Which he sent to speaker, deputy speaker.
We got that in our packet, right?
Yeah.
In the packet, yeah.
Majority leader.
That one is on the retirement system.
That's on the retirement system. The, to increase, I guess Representative Cushing, I think, has, has a bill into increase the funding so, so the state would pay 15% of retirement. Which would be, you know, we've been hit by that.
Be great.
So I think that would be it. Because the state pretty much is back, totally backed out of that.
Right. So I just need authorization of the board to write a letter in that regard as well.
Kenny?
So I, I move that we authorize and encourage Dr. Morse to write a letter in support of House Bill 413 and to send it to the individuals that are listed here.
Moved by Kenny, second by Dan. Discussion? Here now, all those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. That letter's authorized. I'd like a motion to authorize a board meeting after the deliberative session for the purposes of responding to any change in, in the warrants. Because, remember we talked earlier, if a warrant is fundamentally changed, we should have the right to recommend or not recommend, and this is the only way we could do it. If, if they, if it doesn't happen, you know, we, you know, we, I don't know, we just meet in adjourn or whatever, you know. But this gives us the chance to, if that warrant is, say, turned and we want to endorse it, you know, we want to recommend it, this will give us a chance to do that. So otherwise, we would not have an option to do that. So that's the logic there. And you've checked with the lawyer, we can, this is how we would do this, right?
Yeah.
Would you write after the deliberative session?
Yeah. Your choice, I mean, in terms of timing, the issue is the opportunity presents itself because you're all together at deliberative session and you're going to have a public meeting at the end of deliberative session, as you do here. The other option is to have, to address any changes at your next regularly scheduled meeting. The problem with that is timing. We can't get the balance printed in time. So if the board is predisposed to make a change in terms of its recommendation, it has to be that night in order to get to the printer.
Denise?
So I'd like to make a motion to add an additional meeting at the end. So it would be basically a regular meeting at the end of deliberative session specifically to address if, a warrant that was substantially changed.
Moved by Denise, second by Dan. Okay. All, is it clear?
What I would say is it's, the board is authorizing to have a public meeting at the end of deliberative session. Leave the content out. I'll strike through like I always do, and it'll just be a single item agenda.
Okay.
So just not put in a warrant.
Yeah, if you just say, keep it at.
Okay, so we had a, I'm sorry, it was moved by Denise and was rejected by Dan. Okay. Discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. That meeting is authorized. Okay, we have two versions of a possible position statement. And I went, I took the initiative to write a, a shorter version drawing on the information on the, the longer version that the communications committee. My own feeling was that's probably too long and too much information for the purpose of, of the meeting. So what I did is I pretty much pulled and condensed the points, you know, pretty much following the points that we've been talking about all along. So that's, that's what I tried to do. One change that I made is that I did not put in the issue of injuries, possible injuries and, and health consequences, because it was not part of the original in 2013. It was not part of the recommendations that came from that committee. They did not, they did not speak on that. I'm correct on that, Todd, right? I'm sorry. That, that the committee that was formed, you know, to, to review the football proposal in 2013 did not weigh in on.
Did not do anything medical?
Yeah, it did not do that. And as a board, I think we've had people, individual opinions. But we, as a board, we have not fully investigated the issue of the health consequences of football, although I think people have made statements. But I, I, personally, I think that that opens up a problem for the statement, so I kept it out. So we can talk about that. But, and I think if, if individuals do have concerns, they could still raise them as individuals at that, at the meeting. And I think that would be the way to go on that. So, so anyways, I thought this, I thought what I did here, I don't mean to blow my own horn. I thought it was. Maybe a little. I thought it captured the main points in a more succinct way. So that's what I tried to do. Because I figured if we didn't have, if we had to just, we didn't want to revise, go and revise the thing in, in public meetings. So we might have a chance, a slim chance maybe of getting this done and not having to have another meeting. Kenny?
And I appreciate, and you certainly did make those points concise. Without the health issue, I couldn't even support it. And to me, the reason I'm against football is the health issue. And I feel that there's a community demand, you know, of Title IX and the implications. We would make that adjustment if kids want to play football. If there's the cost, our board, you know, we talked about phys ed today. We've done it with other positions. I see the reason to meet that. My big objection is the rest of the nation is moving away from football. First page of the New York Times today is moving away from football. It's about health, and that's why I'm against football, not for these other points. So I wouldn't support this without the health priorities.
So the way I've been imagining this, whatever we end up approving, is that, my hope is that it would reflect a consensus of the board to the greatest extent possible. You know, the point about the health issues on football, I don't dismiss those for sure. I don't, well, I will say for myself individually, sort of where I'm at presently is I see, I see where we're headed, I think. I see where the science is taking us. But, you know, as a, as a district school board, I'm uncomfortable taking a strong position on whether or not to support this program when, you know, yes, there, there is research coming out pretty frequently, it seems. But, you know, we have not seen any formal positions from any leading organizations nationally that I'm aware of. You know, American Academy of Pediatrics, for example, still doesn't have any change in their position. I'm just uncomfortable as an individual board member taking that strong position on the health issues. I do feel though that the other, you know, the Title IX issues, the policy issues, the costs, stability, resource issues, I feel as though that's where we have found consensus as a board, although if I've misread that, you know, please let me know. So I am generally supportive of the, of the redraft. The one thing that in retrospect we might want to change is, if we were to approve this revision, is the, the final paragraph where it expresses the board's, oh, I'm sorry. The board's desire that it be an option at, in this district. I'm not sure we have consensus on that. So that might be something we would reword. The, the board appreciates that the advocates of a football program believe in the sport. Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I misread that. And want it as an option. I was reading it as the board wants it as an option. So maybe just some ambiguity there. But I'm generally supportive of this, but I'm open to whatever the rest of the board members want to do.
So first of all, I really do, you know, I think, I think of myself as I come here and I have to open up this blue folder and I'm trying to do the manifest and I'm trying to read stuff. So I do appreciate making it one simple page. It's kind of, because I, I'm thinking of the attention span of people that have come to the deliberative session. They're opening up those warrants and they can look at this and they're compact and you can read it in a couple of minutes and you're good. As to the health issue, I think the interesting thing is, is that we've been caught up with concussions. And it's like, it, it turns out that where the science is going, the direction of science, it's, it's more than just concussions. And so I think if we, I'm trying to think of the most effective way to convey where science is going in terms of it. Because the answer is when you say, well, we're concerned about concussions, well, then someone who is trying to do a football program and say, well, we have a concussion protocol that we handle. We've, we've, you know, we've changed the way we do practice so they've addressed that health issue. And I think where the science is going is, is that it's greater than that. And that's what's coming out. And I, I'm trying to think of the most effect, it's very difficult in a paper that we're going to hand out, that somebody's going to be sitting there and kind of looking at, to convey that new information. And it would be really nice if we had, I don't know, a physician or physicians that could take the time to walk up to the podium and explain the difference between concussions and where science is going in a succinct timeframe that, that can explain it.
The piece that I wrote said exactly that. And it said it was not concussions. It is the.
Well, I mean, again, it was, it was too long. And we have to, it has to be.
But we, as a board, we never investigated this. We never did. The committee that vetted the previous proposal did not go into that. You know, we all have read things, you know, you know, as, you know, so, I mean, we can have our, our personal views. I think you're open, we're opening up ourselves a big can of worms if we put this, put that in there. I, I do. Denise?
And another issue is I personally would prefer that we eliminate five about the fields because I think that's going to be also opening up, oh, that's why we did the renovation and, and that sort of thing. I think that the arguments that we have in one through four are strong enough. I, I think I would prefer that we just eliminate five completely. Regarding the health thing, honestly, I could go either way. If we did put another five in that strict, that simply said, you know, concerns about safety are unanswered or, you know, are still unresolved or just like a one-sentence thing or something, I would be fine with that.
Denise, can I ask you to repeat your rationale on why?
So five with the fields, because of the new fields, like, I think that, again, talking about opening up a can of worms is that, you know, well, we did this whole big field renovation project and, you know, I, I just feel like some of the football people would argue that, well, isn't that, you know, we were supposed to be able to have more playing fields and more time. And, and I, I don't think we need number five. I would personally like to take it out.
Fairness, it's like, how come soccer gets the field in football?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. So I would just like to take it out.
Todd, I mean, are the field, it seems to me like the fields are using them into the night already, right?
Well, yeah, they're, they're going to be maximally used for sure. So I know Corey talked about needing to extend into the nighttime hours and utilizing lights. I mean, the fields themselves are perfectly suitable to have football activity happening on them, but it is a matter of hours of the day. And, yeah, so we'd probably be looking at, you know, till eight, nine o'clock at night having lights on, on a pretty regular basis to be able to facilitate all the programs.
But you know what I'm saying? Like, well, they would say, wait a second, how come we can't rotate Socrates?
Right, right. So I think we can just take it out.
I can see where you're coming from.
Yeah. And just, just take out five. And I don't think it takes away from, you know, our concerns.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Sarah?
I think the piece that five adds though is, is the piece about the potential of needing to rent fields. I mean, you know, I, I think that's a valid piece. So if we all of a sudden, you know, we've told the taxpayers, we don't have to rent fields anymore. We're building this field so we don't have to rent fields. And now we're saying, oh, we have to rent fields.
Say the fields are maximally used and addition of a sport would cost us to.
And I think that could be put, you know, I don't have a problem with five. I, I don't think the taxpayers have, you know, I think, I don't think that's opening a can of worms. But I could, I could bend on that and say, okay, as long as we put that, that cost piece up, you know, in, in three, I'm fine with that. I think, I, I, I've been going back and forth about this medical piece because I loved what Kenny wrote in the, the medical piece, but I also, in the first draft that we got. But I also appreciate that it was really long. And, and would I necessarily have read that if I, I were a voter? I also struggle though with the medical piece of, of whether that's my, our decision as a board to, to say that this sport that is nationally approved, that we're not going to allow it. I, I don't let my kids play that sport because of those reasons. But, but, but I have a hard time with that. And I also, however, hear what Kenny's saying, that he, he doesn't feel he can support this if there's no medical piece there. So I don't know where I'm going with that. I'm struggling with it in my head.
Maria?
I would have a very hard time supporting it without a medical piece. The science is certainly evolving, or the science isn't, but the data that the science is based on is evolving. We change start times. And I did read the pediatric, Association of Pediatric. They don't necessarily say that we should start at 8:30 or 9:00. They say adolescents need more sleep. That's the difference. They also say they should go to bed at 11:00. And we haven't worked on that. And they also say they shouldn't be drinking caffeine. And we haven't worked on that. And we accepted the fact they need more sleep to mean that we should change the start time at some cost. It's easy to say that it's nationally accepted. It's getting less and less. So people are changing their minds as they see the results. And I wrote up a short health part. Which reads, many recent studies all point to the deleterious effects of tackle football to the brain, most particularly, and that's what the research says, at the grade three to 12, grade levels. These permanent brain injuries often result in long-term cognitive and memory deficiencies, not infrequently leading to depression, early dementia, and death. One of our goals is health and well-being, isn't it? So not to mention something that we're doing without mentioning the effect on our goal. To me, it doesn't make any sense at all. So. Yeah. I typed it all by myself.
I have one. I just was going to attack before the deeper one of the health issue, number five. And if you made number five just as a compromise, say, it is likely, the board has serious concerns about the capacity of the current fields to accommodate an additional sport. It is likely the addition of a football program would require either upgrades to our current fields and/or finding fields to rent. Is that okay?
I, I just think that you're going to end up getting a lot of the people coming up and getting into this big discussion about how we did this huge renovation project.
Yeah, I, I got it.
That's, that's my fear. I, I feel like the more we say, then the more they're going to counter. I feel like the more we say, then the more they're going to counter. So sometimes, you know, less is better, I guess.
I think that's what's going to happen.
It's probably going to happen anyway, but-
Yeah.
Well, I think without these pieces in there, I think, without the, I agree, because I think without the detail that Kenny's piece provides, I think it's soccer has more concussion rates, hockey has more, you know, I think that's the argument. And I think the piece that Kenny provides was helpful, at least to me, reading that. But I, but I totally appreciate the, we didn't handle it as a, you know, we didn't research that as a board. I mean, can Kenny speak as a community member for that?
Sure, sure, sure. I'm trying to figure the best way to convey that, in a succinct way, that the health risk is more than just concussions, that recent evidence is indicating, that's what Kenny's article is saying. How is the best way to convey what recent information is showing?
And I don't know if, I mean, you do need explanation, so I don't know if you can make it shorter, but hearing you talk about five, and talk about football and competing for fields, to me, the reason why the health piece is crucial is that's why we're not going to have football. Why don't we get rid of lacrosse and have football? Why don't we get rid of soccer and have football? We're choosing, and we're saying, why don't we want football? And we're talking about it because we have other programs that are up and going. Football's going to change the mix. But the question is, why isn't football as valid as those other sports? And the validity is the health. And without the health piece, I think this is, it doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't add up.
So, hearing that, and I can really appreciate that argument, then I guess I would like to suggest, I don't know, I'm making a motion yet, but, just because I think we're still talking, but maybe instead of the current five fields, have a five that's the, call it health or, or safety, maybe safety would be the best word to head it off, and incorporate perhaps Maria's, which kind of has the essence of what you were saying in a much shorter, and still be able to keep it to a page. I don't know if that would, if that would, you'd be comfortable with that.
Could you read Maria's again?
Sure. So Maria's proposal is that it include health, and the language would be, many recent studies all point to the deleterious effects of tackle football to the brain, most particularly at the grades three to 12 levels. These permanent brain injuries often result in long-term cognitive and memory deficits, not infrequently leading to depression, early dementia, and death.
The only thing I would want to add to that is, it is not related to concussions, but it is related to the multiple sub-concussive blows that every play, every contact play in football invokes. It just, I think we have a sophisticated community, and I think people will read, but-
So Maria did not use the word concussions to be all-inclusive? Maria?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think she was trying to do that, Ken.
Couldn't you then, I hate wordsmithing at the table, honestly, I do, but I'm going to shoot at it and say, couldn't you say, recent studies indicate the collisions from football result in deleterious effects to the brain? These permanent brain injuries often result in long-term cognitive and memory defects, not infrequently leading to depression, early dementia, and death. Would that cover it?
You added two words or three words. Perfect.
Right, I forgot what I said. It's like, I'm sorry. So, what did I say? Recent studies all point to the-
All point? How could you say that?
I know, I just-
You're just making these claims, you know, I mean, I just think we're getting in bad territory here. Maybe, maybe nobody else feels that way.
No, I do. And I, I mean, and I, Maria, I hear the piece about, you know, we change the start time based on the fact that middle schoolers need more sleep. But it's, but it has, the start time has to move later because they go to sleep later. It's all about that rhythm that starts them sleeping later. So in order for them-
That's not what pediatric people said. They said, they need more sleep. More sleep, go to bed at 11:00.
But then there's all the research that said they don't fall asleep between 11:00 and 2:00. Any rate-
Up into three.
I do, I mean, the research is-
Could I make a suggestion for the board?
Please.
So, you know, we could go back and forth on the health issue for a long time. If we, if you wanted to start moving this along, you could take the briefer article that Tom wrote with the amendment of taking the cost of the fields up into number three and deleting five. Get that done, and then come back to where the consensus is on the health issue. So separate them for, in order to take action. Does that make sense?
But do we have time to revisit this before?
No, no, we're going to do it tonight. We're going to get this piece done by eliminating five and moving the cost of the fields, as you suggested, Sarah, up into three. That would be the only change we'd make here. Get this passed, then come right back to the health issue, and see whether there's consensus on the board to include health in addition to these four. So just breaking it into two separate motions, Sarah.
Yeah, two separate motions.
I'd have a hard time with that, because I'm voting against the whole thing if the health doesn't get in there.
Okay.
Can I take one more stab at this? I'm going to take out all points, too. I'm going to say, recent studies have found that collisions occurring in tackle football can result, or result in deleterious effects to the brain, most particularly at grade three through 12. These permanent brain injuries often result in long-term cognitive and memory defects, not infrequently leading to depression, early dementia, and death. Does that-
What if we just took out the end, the part about these result in, like, just cut it off at the, you know what I'm saying, that last, cut out that last sentence. Oh, gosh.
Are we going to cite research in here? Like, are we going to, I mean, that's where, you know, I didn't do that research. I love you, Maria, but I, you know, I don't, I didn't do the research myself, so I just, I get so-
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the last sentence, yeah. I'm just taking, I suggested taking out the last sentence and just kind of keeping it that short. Just basically saying-
What do you think?
Well, I don't think we should, I think, I think we're opening, I think we're opening ourselves up to a problem here.
I think, I think we, we all accept that science is telling us that these health concerns are increasingly important. I think where we don't have consensus is our confidence as a district school board to be making a bold statement on a policy decision that we're making related to health concerns that seem to be evolving rapidly. And my lack of confidence in taking that position, though I am very receptive to it, is, is that, you know, we're sort of, we're sort of taking on an issue that other organizations that are more specialized in this area have not yet taken positions on. I'm not trying to in any way discredit the science or undermine the importance of its consideration. I just feel like as a, as a school board, there's a, there's value in sort of limiting our reach. And, and the other thing is, too, you know, yes, we talked about it, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't call in experts on this issue to talk to us. You know, we didn't do a deep dive into the health issues. I know some of you did, but as a board, I feel our strongest positions rely on, or point back to, you know, we really focused on the impact to current programs, the impact to current resources, how we would adapt with the likelihood that Title IX would become compromised. So those, to me, felt like the areas which we had the greatest consensus on. And, you know, I don't, I'm just uncomfortable making a statement in this way.
Can I try one more time? All right. How about if we say, the board has concerns with the increasing number of studies pointing out the possible health risks of football?
Yes.
I'd be fine with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'll just need to hear it again.
It was perfect.
Go ahead, Alan.
All right.
Board has concerns.
The board has concerns with the increasing number of studies pointing out the health risks of football.
Well, the injury, permanent injury, brain injury.
Well-
I mean-
Because health is, okay, you get up early, you go out on the wet field, and you get a cold. Those are not the risks we're talking about. We're talking about permanent brain injury.
So I'm going to move it like this, just because I think it's a compromise of all of ours. It's expressing our concerns about the health. Again, I think that, I would hope there's some private citizens that can go to the microphone and explain in more detail what the exact health risks are, because I think that's a really important component of it. But that said, I would like to move the board position, which scratched number five and added number five as I amended the health issue.
So scratch number five and not put it in the cost section, or just scratch number five totally?
I just scratched, I'm going to go with Denise's one, to take the fields one off, and in its place, put the health thing that I added.
Okay.
But cost was going to go up, there was going to be a comment about cost in three, that just possible increased costs-
The board has serious concerns about the capacity of fields to accommodate an additional sport. A football program would require either upgrades or-
Okay, so add that to cost, and then scratch five, this is getting complex.
This is, yeah.
No, I get it.
Okay, so if we add, if we add, the board has serious concerns about the capacity of current fields to accommodate an additional-
No, no, that isn't, yeah, we weren't going to have that all, just the thing about-
Sarah had pointed out that if that is gone, then the issue around the cost of the fields goes with it, and she felt that should go up into number three, so I follow that pretty much.
So you could just say, under three could be increased cost of fields.
So you're saying it is likely the addition of football would require either upgrades to fields or renting fields? Is that what you're adding to the cost?
Sure.
Well, see, my, but, yeah, see, I'm just looking at, you know, maybe lights or something. So I would just say, would it potentially increase costs? And then that would cover what Sarah's concerns are without getting into all the specifics about-
So could you give the language that would go into cost?
Sure. Let's see, furthermore, associated costs are not considered, is already up there. Then it talks about the storage thing, but maybe we could just say additional costs, additional lighting costs and other related costs.
Lighting and rental.
I think that's deceptive.
I want to say the board is concerned about-
I think we should just leave, I'd rather just leave it out than to just skirt around it. I mean, I think-
So scratch the fields-
I can scratch number five.
And then add, in its place, the health.
Yep.
Okay. So are we okay to, it's a compromise, I know it's not as much detail as some people would want, it's more detailed than I would want, but, so are we ready to vote? Do we all understand?
You moved it, did someone second it?
I did.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
I did. Are we ready to vote?
And I appreciate it's a compromise. I don't, maybe people who didn't think the health piece should be there, I don't understand how that's okay. Because it, in a way, it's, it's saying the same thing, really. It's one sentence, but it says football is associated with health risks. So I just point that out.
Okay. Ready to vote?
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, so are we ready to vote? All of us in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. We have a unanimous statement. Good.
Okay.
Where are we?
I think that's it.
Do we, we didn't, yeah, we did Todd's letter.
Todd's letter, I think we've done it all, yeah.
We need to do non-public.
Committee updates.
Public comments.
Yep.
Yeah, Maria?
Yes. First, I just want to say I want a gold star to put in my halo for going, giving up opera and the women's march to go to the New Hampshire School Board Association thing, which was, you know, you learn something new no matter how many times you go. And there has been staff-wise, some going to be some shakeup. The Big Muck Muck is retiring at the end of June, and Barrett Christina is moving up to be the director, and they hired the staff attorney from Kelly Oates' office to be the one to work with us. The first session, the first thing I did was ask if I could make a motion that we'd send a similar letter that we sent about divorce. And I was told I couldn't do that because they're not political, but I thought half of what they do is political advocacy, so, but I didn't make the motion. I was being good. The first presentation was from Huxset, which is K-8 school system, and they won this year's state big award from the School Board Association for being innovative and good. And the one thing, and I hate to bring it up, after our PE discussion, they have instituted consolidated, and Catherine is not here, a sports program which pairs or more regular students with special needs students for sports, to teach both mentorship and the sport itself. And I thought that sounded interesting if somebody wanted to call them. They also had a presentation on, on planning, on, and a concept I've never heard of is the student empathy map, which makes sure that we know what parents, teachers, and students kind of feel about changes like the grading system or things that we're taking as goals for the year. I thought that was interesting. Then we went to a session on non-public meetings, and the laws have changed as of January 1st. And I just want you to know how lucky we are, because one question from the floor was, was it all right to bring a police officer into non-public session to keep violence from breaking out? And we haven't had that.
Not yet.
But you can't.
You can't.
You can't. So- You can't. So, but we can now go into non-meetings to read legal advice by letter. The attorney doesn't really have to be there. And for Al, who always takes the notes, any vote in non-public session has to be done by roll call vote, written down that way. And they really didn't like adjourning someplace except here. Just in case Alexandra is still here, we have to have somebody come down to see that there aren't any members of the public before we adjourn down the hall. And one thing that we now get to do, too, is PDF archival format for stuff that needs to be kept forever. Doesn't have to be kept on paper.
Say that again.
The documents that you are supposed to archive, we can now do in a PDF archival format on computers. So that was good. Then we went to the resolutions. And our resolution passed about the background checks.
Oh, good.
The other resolution that we submitted was about guns, which they did not, the board had not supported, but being stupid, I moved it anyway, which then led to about 45 minutes discussion on why we all need to have guns in school and how parents can't possibly pick up their kids before going hunting, for instance, if they don't.
Grizzly bears, too, right?
And grizzly bears, yeah. So that was pretty much it.
So the resolution on guns did not pass?
It did not pass after 45 minutes of discussion.
Well, thank you for moving it, though.
Other?
I think two stars, not just one.
Okay.
Other committee updates?
If it's okay with the board, given that it's almost 10 o'clock, I will postpone my sustainability committee update until the next meeting.
Okay. Just one, I hate to ask, do, should we read, should the statement that we just approved, should that be just a part of the, part of the, you're going to make it like part of the warrant explanations? Or should we, should somebody read that into the, you know? What's the sense of the committee?
I would recommend it be both.
Yeah, I think you should do both.
So.
That'd be what printed?
Printed and then read as a response to when the warrant article is introduced? I would think so. I mean, it's short enough.
We do it on all the other warrants.
Yeah, you might as well.
So it would be kind of obvious if we didn't.
Okay. Although somebody else would introduce that warrant. Okay.
So who's going to do that, then?
Whoever.
What?
Whoever, the person who's going to introduce the warrants, whoever made the warrant, right?
Yeah, so somebody else would introduce warrant article A because that's not our warrant. And then I would think that maybe as chair, I could read the statement.
Yeah, they'll make a motion to do it, and then it'll open it up to discussion. And when it opens up to discussion, then the board could read its.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I just want to be clear. Okay. Okay, we have these closing dates, which I won't go over. And I think the last date for this board will be March 15th, right?
Yep.
Okay, even though that's after the election, this board, the new board won't be certified until the meeting after that, right?
Technically, neither Sarah or Denise would be voting members until three days after the election. Well, Sarah won't be at all, but assuming Mike and Denise are reelected, they can't function by law until three days after the election. So it would mean we were a five-member board on that March 15th meeting.
So we wouldn't be able to.
It'd be a four-member board because I won't be here.
So it might be like, maybe we wouldn't have a meeting that, since we had 16 at budget season and right up until deliberative session.
Okay, well, maybe.
So then the last.
If that's the way, that might not be, because you're going to like pick the principal that night, right?
Well, it just delays that present, that nomination.
Okay, okay.
If there's only going to be four people, you don't want to introduce a new principal to the board, that wouldn't be.
So the previous members don't carry over, you know?
No, I checked that. So it'll be that just pause for Denise and Michael before they can actually, because she has to retake her oath of office, and the law says there's a three-day waiting period. I guess that's in case of contested hanging Chad kind of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Likelihood of that. Can we have a motion to go into non-public session, then?
I will motion to go into non-public. So I'll let Kenny do this. He does it better.
We do the student issue first?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Can we go into non-public for the student issue first?
You're good at reading them.
So to move into non-public, based on New Hampshire state law, RSA 91-8:3, Roman numeral two, C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dan. Roll call.
Dan Klein, yes.
Sarah Farwell, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
Okay.
So we're coming back. Are we coming back in?